Good afternoon, Board members, college staff in Friends of Laredo College. The time is 6:00 PM on this, the 28th day of October 2021, and I call this meeting of the Laredo College Board of Trustees to order. Trustee Delgado, may you say the prayer, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. Loving and gracious God, you are indeed the giver of all good gifts, and we thank you today for all your blessings, for all the successful outcomes of our college events, and for all of our faculty, our staff, and most importantly, our students. We ask that you bless them abundantly as we continue to seek your wisdom, your guidance, your courage, and your strength. Be with us in our deliberations and help us to be wise in the decisions that we make for the good of all those who have placed their trust, and most importantly, their confidence in our leadership. Give us the insight to lead with integrity so that our decisions may reflect what is right and what is good. Keep us from shortsightedness and pettiness. Help us to make the decisions that are good for all and guard us from blind self-interest. Dear Lord, we ask that you grant us the humility to always seek your will in all that we do and all that we say. Amen.
Amen.
Judge, the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ramos, could you please call roll?
Yes, ma'am. Lupita Cepeda?
Present.
Jorge J.D. Delgado?
Present.
Jackie Levin Ramos, present. Cynthia Mahrez, absent. Mercuria Martinez Jr.?
Present.
Dr. Henry Carranza?
Absent.
Esteban Rangel?
Present.
Karina Lisondo?
Present.
Tita Cantubella?
Absent.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Ramos. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. The next item that we have is approval of the regular board meeting of September 30th and special board meeting of October 14th. Do I have a motion?
So move.
I have a motion by Ms. Ramos. I have a second by Mr. Delgado. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item I have is public testimony. Do we have public testimony? We do. Okay. So let me go ahead. How many do we have?
Eleven.
Eleven. So let me go ahead and read the item, the public comment. An individual comment to the board shall not exceed three minutes per person. When there are six or less speakers scheduled, the board president may extend each speaker's time to five minutes. Time may not be seated from one speaker to another. The board president may also limit the total amount of time for public testimony but not to less than 30 minutes. The speaker may not speak on personnel or student matters that refer to individuals by name or title. After a speaker's comment, the board president shall make whatever response, if any, or take whatever action. If any is inappropriate to handle the matter, such respond or action may include the following: referring the matter to the college president for action or for further recommendations; referring the matter to a later meeting or to a board committee for further discussion or study; indicating that the matter shall be taken under advisement. If the board president determines that a person has not attempted to resolve a matter administratively, the person shall be directed to the appropriate policy for attempted resolution before bringing the matter to the board. Do I have the list of who signed up? So the first person that I have signed up is Jaime B. Don Juan, and you have three minutes, sir.
Wow. Who's gonna take time? Who's gonna take time? I think it's gonna be Liz.
Will you be taking time? Thank you.
My name is Jaime Don Juan. I want to begin by thanking you for this opportunity to be here today. Thank you, board members, administrators. Thank you for having me here today. I've been here many times, but usually to showcase our national championships, which is, by the way, seven national championships. After our first championship, our former president, Dr. Dolina, in 2005 named the college of the champions. I would like to pass this around. Are you gonna pass it, please? It's a billboard that was displayed all around Laredo. I want to believe that the administration, board members, and community was extremely proud of the winning tradition that the tennis team had brought into Laredo College. Those were the days. The tennis teams won national titles, although that's not all. The other teams, such as baseball, volleyball, softball, and soccer, also had success. They didn't win national titles, but they were winning on and off the court and field. We offered opportunities to local, district, out-of-region, out-of-state, and worldwide students. Our athletic programs have put out medical doctors, nurses, business people, and even our most recent movie star, Imane Sfandi, who was starring in King Richard, a Will Smith movie that will be coming up in November. Now is the time to bring athletics back, not eliminate. The epidemic, the pandemic is over, in my opinion. Students are ready to come back to college, but Laredo College needs to show we are back and that we are keeping our word. We said athletics is suspended because of COVID. Well, now it turns out that it's a financial situation. I took over a $20,000 pay cut during pandemic year. I had the opportunity to move on and stayed because I believed that Laredo College would come back with sports. Lastly, I'm also here for my new team members. We need to bring back Camilo Prada. The ladies that have worked with us this past year are absolutely amazing. And by the way, it's interesting. This marks the 50th anniversary for athletics. I know we're talking about the 75th. This also marks the 50th anniversary for athletics. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Don Juan.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, coach.
The next speaker is Christina Garcia.
Hello, board members. My name is Christina Garcia, former student here at Laredo College. I am a student athlete, and I now play at Texas A&amp;M International thanks to Laredo College. So I personally experienced the facilities, the housing, the gyms. I got to be in touch with coaches here and get all my opportunities because of Laredo College. So many schools wish they had proper equipment, wish that they had these opportunities that we are presented, so to be taken away from us is hard. So it would also bring admissions in. People would try out. They want to come to Laredo College and be a student athlete and get those opportunities that we were provided before the pandemic. So it's doable. Having the coaching and people willing to put in the time and effort to coach these programs, Coach Graham, Coach Lansford are more than willing to come forward and teach the girls how to be a student athlete. The privilege and opportunity to be taken away, thank you.
No, that's not fair.
Okay. But yeah, the privilege and opportunity to be taken away from young adults and young children to look forward to is gonna be sad, not only for softball, but for soccer, baseball, tennis, cheerleading. There's just so many things that would be taken away when other colleges are doing it. So I don't know why Laredo College wouldn't be able to do, just put the facilities to waste would be devastating. We have a field here. We have the housings. I just don't, yeah, but that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Can I have everybody silence, your cell phones, please? Thank you. I'd also like to recognize in attendance Dr. Henry Carranza and Ms. Tita Vela. Thank you. Next person is Melanie Gamboa.
Good evening. My name is Melanie Gamboa. I'm a current graduate student at Texas A&amp;M International. I am also a collegiate athlete that is playing softball. For starters, I want to say thank you for allowing me to speak on this issue. Being able to play the sport is a privilege, and to have that taken away, not only for kids that plan on going to college, but all those kids lined up out there, would be a great injustice to Laredo athletes. I've played with, I've trained, and I've worked with some of the best athletes in Laredo, and I see them growing up, and I would hope that they would get the same opportunities that I've gotten. Not only would you be taking away someone's ability to continue playing, but also their dream to represent the city. Personally, I take great pride in representing Laredo, and I love going to places like Oklahoma, cities around Texas, cities around Oklahoma, in New Mexico, in Kansas, and being able to receive compliments and awards from other coaches acknowledging the fact that we have talent here in Laredo. I love being able to represent my city. Like I said, being able to play while getting my education has opened so many doors, and I've created so many friendships in doing so. I've created friends with Tina, who's from the Valley. I've created friends from Australia, friends from Hawaii. Those are only opportunities that I would get playing college sports. And I've created, again, I've created so many friendships and so many genuine connections, and I would hope that every athlete in Laredo would be able to get that same opportunity. So I'm asking you to please reconsider opening up athletics here in Laredo College. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gamboa. Next, I have Linda Farahri. I hope I pronounced that right.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Linda Farah. I'm a former student athlete, a coach, and I'm currently a high school teacher. I started college in Laredo Community College back in 2007, and I graduated high school as a junior. I left LCC after one semester looking for opportunities to play college level. There wasn't any at the time. I was one of the few lucky ones, if you want to call it that. It was not easy leaving home at 17. I left to New York to pursue my dream of playing soccer. I was out of state. There was lack of opportunities in my hometown, and they didn't offer any at the time. But thanks to the support of my family and coaches, I believe I was able to play for a junior college Division One for two years. After I completed my double associate degree and played for a Division One college, I got elected as one of the transfer for TCU, where I successfully completed my education and my college soccer career as a local player, which was absolutely the best and the most amazing stories that I have. This shaped me into the teacher that I am today, and it's what I want for my students and the next generation of local talented players, an equal opportunity for their hometown not to travel 1,000 miles like I did. My younger brother, luck changed when he graduated high school. It was back in 2016, and the Laredo College started their soccer program. I was thrilled. He followed my footsteps. But this second time around, he had the support from local coaches. His family was able to support him and cheer him at home. He developed as a student athlete and continued his education after getting his associate from LC. Within two years, he transferred with the help of the LC coaches to San Merritt University, where he's soon to be a graduate and become also a coach. He wants to help his community. He's actually in San Antonio right now, but he wants to give the same or even better opportunities in education and development in his hometown. It's a tremendous opportunity for students that are graduating from high school, where I'm seeing right now, and they have the option to be seen and be able to wear a local jersey. Why send them out when they have the potential to grow locally? I believe everything changed after the pandemic, and maybe nothing would ever be the same. Giving hope and opportunity for my local high school students to attend college and join the athletic program, it's a great incentive and something to look forward for our students. Please do not eliminate the athletic program. Let's come together, build possibilities for our youth, and my next goal would be to become a soccer coach in a local high school and run an excellent athletic program for our girls, and it will be ideal to have women's soccer in our beloved Laredo College. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to recognize Ms. Cynthia Mahrez in attendance of our meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
The next person I have is Brian Flood.
Good afternoon, board members. I'm new to your community, about 13 years in your community. I'm a former major league ball player. My uncle was Kirk Flood, the father of free agency. Okay? Some of you guys here today, there's a half that might not want it. They want to get rid of it for economic reasons. Other half that want to have it. Sports is very important because it's part of education. I've got two daughters that graduated from JW Nixon. You might have heard of them, Jasmine and Ashley Flood. They went on to Frank LaPresta University to play D2 tennis. COVID hit. They played the first part of the season. My daughter Jasmine won Rookie of the Year in the Northeast Conference from here in Laredo. Okay? These are young ladies that came over from Mexico, didn't speak the language. I wanted them to get their education here. They went to Nixon. They were able to get a scholarship, both of them, and they went there. COVID hit. They came back in March, finished online, and I said, "Look, let's not go back to Franklin Paris in New Hampshire." They studied here at Laredo Community College, got their GPAs up to 3.7, 3.9. Were about to, wanted to play tennis here. Said, "No, we're not gonna go there. We're gonna stay here in Laredo." But there's no tennis. Everything's suspended. Sports is suspended. Now, you really need it. You need to bring it back, and I think one of the solutions that might help you guys to achieve that is the same way you're able to go out and get grants from the federal government and from the Department of Education, because I myself, the last couple of days, have been investigating with your local congressman, your local senator, and I found out, lo and behold, you guys never even applied for grants for the sports area. Now, that might alleviate your problem, which you'll say is, "Okay, well, we can't have sports this spring. Let's shoot for the fall of next year." But in that pause time, you guys can go out and you can apply for these grants. Now that'll alleviate the burden of the lost profits, because there's losses probably in sports, there's loss in other sports, but you guys manage every year to keep it going. Now you have an opportunity during this pause period, okay? Because I understand the contracts of your coaches ending in August, so you have now and before August to come up with that. If you come up with that money, now you've taken care of your solution. Now you don't have to eliminate sports. Okay? So making a drastic decision right now, after the meeting's over a couple of days, and say, "Hey, we're not gonna have sports. We're just gonna eliminate it," you haven't given it a full effort. And if you believed in the prayer that you gave today, this afternoon, on those words, and I hope they're not just words, I hope it really comes from the heart, okay? You guys will sit down. The ones that are not sure about it will now sway the other way, and the ones that want it, they'll sway that way. And you'll say, "Hey, let's put a pause on it. Let's work on it. Let's see if we can get a grant to open up sports for the community," because the community needs it. This school needs it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Flood.
Thank you.
Next person that I have is Maria de Lourdes Gutierrez.
Very short here, sorry. Well, I hate to be the Debbie Downer in all of this, but, good evening. My name is Lourdes Gutierrez, and I'm here today to give you the faculty, or one faculty member's perspective on this athletics issue. I have been a psychology instructor here since 2007. A lot of things have changed since then. When I first started at LC, we did not teach online. I was one of the first few that started teaching online. A lot of these changes, well, since then, some of these changes came about due to online instruction. Some of these changes came about due to our dual enrollment program. Some of these changes came about, of course, because of COVID. But a lot has changed since I first started here. When I started in 2007, like I said, we didn't teach any online classes. Today, almost every instructor at LC is teaching online, at least one class. They are doing this, hold on a minute. I should have brought my glasses. I printed it big, thinking I wouldn't need my glasses. Give me a second here. Today, almost every instructor here teaches at least one online class, and had it not been for online instruction, we would not have made it through COVID. At the time when COVID hit, a lot of instructors were not teaching online, and the e-learning department with four, four course designers and the help of instructors like myself, were able to work through spring break and in two weeks turn every single class taught in this college into an online class. And not only did we do that, but we worked through spring break, through the end of the spring semester, through the summer, to get those classes, not just online classes, to get them QM, Quality Matter certified, by fall. That is an amazing achievement. Many instructors, like I said, had never taught online, yet we managed this tremendous challenge, and we were able to keep teaching through the pandemic. As we returned back to face-to-face instruction this semester, we noticed that students weren't quite ready to come back. It was the online classes that were filling up first. It isn't until you all waived tuition that we started to see an increase in the face-to-face classes. We also had to adjust our dual instruction, because we don't send faculty members to the campuses right now because of COVID. And I am sorry, I beg to differ. COVID is not over, and the proof is, we're still all wearing masks. So because of COVID, we had to adjust our dual instruction. We no longer send faculty to the campus they teach here from campus via Zoom. Some instructors have had to teach their dual enrollment class from their cars using their cell phones on Zoom, because the internet is too slow at LC.
Time.
Time?
The time is done.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
It's okay.
Just to let you know, just really quickly, we worked really, really, really hard, and we started a technology, a teaching excellence center. We started, we're trying to bring a new technology, and I think that's where the emphasis is. When priorities are, when resources are scarce and priorities are, we must prioritize.
Right. So, thank you, Ms. Gutierrez.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next person I have is Carla Ramirez.
Good afternoon, board members, staff, and the Laredo community. Middle schools and high schools in Laredo have years forming strong athletic programs, and LCC cutting sports out is cutting out opportunities for those students who aren't able to leave the city to attend college out of town, leaving them with practically no chances to continue playing sports at higher local levels. LC's athletic program has been a strong pillar for many students who have been successful not only academically, but also athletically. Just as an example, in 2017, softball athlete Karina Moreno was the first person in her family to earn a college degree, and she accredited that to LCC softball program. Mateos Campos was a part of your tennis program. He is now playing tennis for Cameron University. Benjamin Garcia played two years for your baseball team. He later transferred to UTSA, finishing his bachelor's, and is now an assistant baseball coach for Our Lady of the Lake University. Angel Garza, he earned his associate's degree here at LC while playing soccer with your program. He transferred to the University of Encarnate Word with a soccer and academic scholarship. He is currently a medical student, scheduled to graduate with his PhD. These are just some of the many students that LC's athletic program has helped pave a future for in our local community. I humbly ask that you please reconsider eliminating sports from LC and ask you to think of all those opportunities our kids out there are going to lose on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez.
Thank you.
Sorry, I was not prepared to speak today, but good evening and thank you for allowing us the opportunity to express our concerns. I wasn't intending to be here to speak, but I'm here for these children. I feel very strongly this is important for our community. I'm here tonight as a member of both a parent, a member of our community, adult, I have minor and adult children that are athletes in this community, as a healthcare worker, as a proud parent, future generations, as a volunteer coach. I'm volunteering coaching, hoping that my kids are gonna get here someday. And I can't believe we're in a position where we're volunteering coaching for them to go to another city, that the opportunities won't be here. And I apologize for being emotional, but this is our children. I believe athletics is a huge part of our community's physical, emotional, and mental health, and I'm not sure that we all understand that. I believe in the middle of a pandemic, as a healthcare worker, which drove many of us inside, we saw the impact to this community, and we will be seeing it for decades to come. Remember the crisis we see already now in mental health and obesity? That's going to be exponentially worse, and these are basic, basic principles that we know athletics will affect in the future. Oh, there's so many wonderful qualities that we could talk about, that athletics brings, leadership, so many other things. We want our city to have pride in what we offer, like the other major cities, and that we have basic, basic athletic programs here, basic opportunities for our children to aspire to, to dream for, to have our children paint from the age of elementary school, and to tell them that your own future opportunity would be in San Antonio, Houston. For the young lady that was here, that's my daughter. Her opportunity is New York City, because that was the closest soccer opportunity for a child here in South Texas. I apologize for being emotional, but I just want to make sure that we understand, these are our children, this is our community, we are community members, and we want something to have our children aspire to. And athletics, it affects so much more than just that one sport. These are going to be people that are going to be your future teachers and your future lawyers, your future doctors, and they'll learn how to work with each other. They're gonna learn how to take care of their bodies, and they're not going to do that sitting down behind a computer. And this is where we are in this age. There's very little athletics left, and I really would feel very passionate that you please reconsider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person I have is Danielle Perez.
Good evening. My name is Danielle Perez. I'm a firefighter, and I've been involved in the soccer community for over 23 years. I was asked to be on the ad hoc committee by Karina Lisondo, who played for me a long time ago, so I want to thank her for that. But I'm here to let you all know that you're doing a great disservice to the community. All those kids, they want to play for Laredo, right? The, all those kids, they wanna play for Laredo, alright? They all worked their, their summers, their, their evenings, their, their everything after school, alright? These kids deserve that opportunity. You all look at numbers, well, let's look at numbers. Without athletics, most kids go the wrong path. There was one kid that I helped about twenty years ago, Raul Quinones Nixon, going down the wrong path. I told him, go to the T M U practice, go to the T M U practice, I mean, tryout. He went, he got a full ride, graduated, became Marine, Board of Patrol. Every time he sees me, Coach, thank you for getting me there. Jacqueline Moreno, a girl that lived in Pueblo Nuevo, all the way over there. She had no way to get over here, so my wife and I would go pick her up, take her to practice. She's now teaching Snyder High School, she's also coaching at Western Texas College. If it wasn't for athletics, she wouldn't do that, alright? I mean, I know there's no women's soccer yet, but I don't understand that you all. LCC is one of the most expensive colleges in the state and yet we can't figure it out, or you all can't figure it out, how to budget something? The student activity fee is supposed to pay for softball and soccer. I mean, so there's questions to be asked there. What's going on? Mismanagement or something's not right there? Now, I'm not accusing anyone of anything, but that money should be allotted for that, not for something else. And as far as COVID, I mean, I work for the fire department, I've seen, I'm not saying it's gone, but the numbers are low. Alright? Also, I hope I was a Laredo heat. All, everywhere we go, all the colleges are playing. All the coll, all the cities are opening up, not totally for business, but there's things going on. Alright? And you're doing a great disservice to those kids out there, alright? Don't ruin this opportunity for them, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perez.
Thank you.
Next person I have is Genesis Garza.
Good evening, board members. Sorry, soccer, um, I, I'm a senior in Martin High School. I play soccer, I've been playing soccer, uh, all my life, like these kids outside. And the reason we're, um, training, we train every day, we train twenty-four seven to, in order to, with the goal to play college soccer, sorry, I'm nervous. The, our goal is to like play soccer, college and, um, LC would help. Like, it would be nice to play for our, um, hometown. And, and right now it's only, um, T M U, but it will help a lot to have more college, like here in Laredo. Okay, coming from a one-parent household, um, athletics is my only way to college. So that's why, hopefully next year I could play soccer college in LC. I grew up here, I live next door, like right outside and I'm always here, I'm familiar with the college. And hopefully I could play, um, hopefully you all consider playing, I mean, putting sports on the college. Sorry, I'm nervous, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garza.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next I have Tanya Castro.
Hello. Um, first of all, thank you for letting me speak today. Hello. Um, okay, so for starters, why I chose to play at Laredo College, out of all the options I had, I had five options, the other five were out of city, out of state. Um, and I chose to play for my city to make our community proud, so my parents can go see me at my games. Sorry. My grandpa, he's elderly, but he loves sports and all he wanted was to see me play college ball. So, that's one of the reasons why I stayed. Um, Laredo College has set a platform for my future and my education. I was able to venture out to New Mexico after Laredo College. I made friendships all across the country because of Laredo College. I now have open doors for me. I have opportunities to go coach at California, Oregon, Austin, um, San Antonio. And those are just some of the few that I have. I, like I said, I've made friendships that are now unbreakable, people that I will have standing at my wedding. And for that, I am forever grateful. Why is it important that we're here today? For all these kids that are lined up outside. Look at them, they have the support, it's here, Laredo wants it. It's important for these kids. I have a younger sibling that she too wishes for my grandpa to see her play for her city and to play college ball. From the beginning, the reason you all gave us, you know, the, the reason why we don't have sports right now is because of COVID. The world has, the world is moving on and Laredo College is staying behind. Why? Why is it that the Dallas Cowboys can have a full stadium, but we can't have sports? No offense to any faculty and to anybody in here that is part of Laredo College, but nobody has impacted my life the way Coach Graham and Coach Lansford have. And for that, I am forever grateful as well. Isela Murillo, Erica Lozano, Deja Tapia, Christina Garcia, Ram Aldonado, Rihanna Tristan, Abigail Rubio, Karina Moreno, Anna McFarland and Amberly Barrera. Those are names of people who are still playing today because Laredo College granted them that platform to continue playing. Now, I myself am a teacher candidate, Tanya Castro. Coach at Salvador Garcia for Laredo, Maria Castro. Coach at Bishop, Michaela Sandoval. Coach at United South, Ale Zerda. Lieutenant Chris Seines for the US Army. Head volleyball coach, Ariana Verma Mendosa. And intern, soon to be Dr. Avi Galván. All from the Laredo College sports. I hope you take this into consideration and that you bring it back. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Castro.
Thank you. Thank you.
At this time, those are all the people that signed up for public comment or public testimony. So I'm gonna continue with the agenda. Number five is recognitions, communications, introductions of personnel and new personnel actions for the month. First one is twenty-twenty-one National Council for Marketing and Public Relations District Four Conference, Mr. Obet Guerrero.
Hello, good evening, members of the board. Animo! We have a tough decision to make, but I know you're gonna make the right decision. So I just hear, uh, I'm here, uh, members of the board, my name is Obet Guerrero, I serve as the Community Administration Relations Director for Laredo College. And, um, good evening, administration, faculty members, also family. It's an honor for me to be here tonight before you. And, um, I just have a, a quick update on the conference I attended last week. Every year, as you already know, we go into a marketing competition among different colleges around the US and Canada, right? So, used to be first the US, now they also added Canada, so it's more competitive now. Uh, we are part of district number four, which, um, it includes six states, Wyoming, Colorado, New Mexico, Texas, Oklahoma and Arkansas, you can see it there. And, um, I have really good results, really good news. So Laredo College was nominated in seven different categories. Radio advertisement, television advertising, computer-generated illustration, social media, online marketing campaign, outdoor media, original photography, manipulated and view book. Usually the way it works, they send a letter, they tell you, your college is nominated in these categories. And sometimes you don't win in, in all of them. Well, this year, to my surprise, we won twelve awards.
Wow, wow.
Thank you. So, um, we won bronze on radio advertisement, bronze on television, at bronze on computer-generated illustration, bronze on online social media campaign, bronze on outdoor media, bronze on manipulated original photography, bronze on view book, silver on radio advertisement, silver computer-generated illustration, silver on manipulated original photography, gold on radio advertisement and gold on computer-generated illustration. The ones that you see highlighted, we swept in those categories. We were the dominant college in those categories, which is very, very hard to do. We have very big colleges here in Texas especially, with Austin Community College, Houston Community College, the San Antonio Colleges is one of the most competitive regions. And, you know, uh, this is thanks to the amazing work and commitment, creativity and all the dedication of my staff. Tonight, I just have Ms. Joanna Santillana and Claudia, uh, Claudia has made something for you. So Claudia, please, if you can help me out, uh, to pass her around. And, uh, since there were too many awards to carry by myself, I just took pictures of them. So these seven are the bronze N C, N C Emperor Awards. These three are the silver awards. And these two are the gold awards. So I just brought five. And, um, it's gonna be impossible without your support. More members, and as you can see, there's a seventy-fifth anniversary of the film thing.
Yes.
Where you can, you can wear it proudly, right? And, uh, I also wanna thank administration, Dr. Marisa Rodriguez for her support, Dr. David Arizola and everyone here because all of us, we make LC strong. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Guerrero, thank you for your team.
Madam Chair.
Thank you for all the awards. Uh, Madam Chair recognizes Mr. Frankel.
Thank you, uh, Obé, great job. I know I spoke to you, uh, you, I, I met with you right before you were gonna take off and you told me that you guys were nominated for...
Seven awards.
Yeah, so, um, I just wanna congratulate you and it, 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 it just, what you're doing in this department, just, it's, uh, it's remarkable and you going out there and competing against all those states. You know, um, not just you, but I know you're being backed up by a great team. You know, uh, I've always said that, you know, uh, with a great leader comes great team. So I wanna applaud you and, and your whole team and, uh, and, uh, put a, a diamond star on, on each and every one of you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. The board, uh, the chair recognizes Dr. Carranza.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I wanted to thank him. No, no, Mr. Obé, I'm very glad to see you standing where you are.
Thank you, sir.
Cause we know we work for many, we work many times.
Yes.
Your work is quality work.
Thank you, sir.
I mean, I don't, I'm not gonna go through this whole spill, you know, but the spill is that you're an excellent.
Thank you, it's thanks to my team.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Chair recognizes Ms. Elisondo.
I just wanna congratulate you and thank you so much for always being so diligent and so, so enthusiastic about performing every single task. So I admire your energy and I admire your commitment to this college. Thank you for your work.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Guerrero.
Did a beautiful job with it.
Oh, yeah, it's beautiful.
Next item that we have is five B accreditation commission for education in nursing, Dr. Diane Miller.
Good evening, members of the board, our LC administration. Marisa Jimenez, uh, um, BSN, um, manager of operations at, uh, Laredo College and I'm also BSN faculty.
Professor Luis Santos, BSN faculty.
Welcome.
Mr. Santos and I are here on behalf of Dr. Miller. We are here to report that Laredo College's BSN program has received full accreditation from the Accreditation Commission for Education in Nursing, or A C E N. A C E N is the leading authority in nursing accreditation. Uh, it supports the interest of nursing education, nursing, nursing practice and, uh, the public. Accreditation, uh, for our program is a peer review process that recognizes educational institutions or programs that have been found to meet or exceed standards and criteria for educational quality. The goal of the A C N is to be a supportive partner in strengthening the quality of nursing education. And just to give you benefits of accreditation by the A C N include aiding in student recruitment, providing student useful information for education decision-making. It enables students eligibility for funding support from federal and state agencies and foundations. It is required by many nursing programs for admission to graduate programs. It is required by some state regulatory agencies. And it assists employers, uh, seeking graduates who are competent practitioners. This process to achieve full accreditation for our BSN program has taken us two years and it was a four-step process for our program. Initially, approval from the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board, then recognition from the Texas Board of Nursing, then approval from SAC C O C to offer a four-year degree and finally our A C N accreditation. LC was one of the first community colleges in Texas to begin offering a BSN after the Texas Legislature approved, uh, community colleges to offer bachelor's degrees and this was in the summer of twenty seventeen. And this is due, uh, to the leadership and the guidance of Dr. Diana Miller, our Dean of Health Sciences, who was always at the forefront of emerging trends in nursing education and pushing us towards excellence. Um, and always to stay, of course, current and relevant in this, in the profession. Of course, with the support and leadership of our board and our administration, uh, ex-president Dr. Solis, our interim president, Dr. Marisa Rodriguez Tijerina, interim provost vice president, Dr. Arizola and director of assessment and Q E P coordinator, Dr. Veronica Martinez, this milestone goal for our community, our college and our program was possible. Mr. Santos is, uh, gonna give you all an update, just a quick update on our programs.
So to date, we have, uh, thirty graduates.
Wow, wow.
Fourteen in the program.
Congratulations, excellent.
In the last two years, we produced thirty graduates, ten of which, or one out of three have already gone on to a master's program. And we know that at least of five that have graduated, uh, with a master's in nursing administration. Uh, that's the last time we checked with them, so that's, would give us a thirty-three percent, uh, graduate school, uh, admission. And we'll get at some numbers as we move further along. So we're hoping to have about an average of fifteen per year, give or take. Um, and then once the, the state revisits, uh, the bill that allowed us to provide a BSN program, we're hoping to, to pull our weight, as, as they say, uh, with our students, our graduate rate and our, uh, graduate, uh, school entry rate. Again, it was a total team effort, although Ms. Jimenez and I were tasked, we were talking about the time that flew by, how we got to know all of administration. Support, uh, from the board, absolutely. Uh, it's the spirit, it's the, I guess, the general mindset of, uh, LC College, us being graduates here too, that has provided us with the opportunity, the vision, the leadership, uh, to have a bachelor's program at Laredo College. And I thought I'd never see the day, but here we are. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Tony.
Yeah, if you guys can come back up real quick.
Can you come back? Chair recognizes Mr. Delgado.
Sorry, guys, I know you guys wanted to walk out, so I apologize.
Wait a minute, I need to, you know, give you my two bits, you know, a little two. Being an RN, uh, of course, I already retired, but, uh, I grad, I'm from the class of seventy-two. So I got to see many, many, many things and the, and the RN program has always been one of the hardest program to go through. I mean, I didn't go through your nails, I see I went through it through bravery, one basically. Uh, but, uh, and completed at Galveston John Silley. But everything that you said is correct. It opens the doors a lot with the first providers, like, uh, there was a fireman here speaking. I was a brunt, they brought, I brought the paramedics to Laredo to talk through LC. You know, we were the first to teach the paramedics to have in, in, uh, here in, in Laredo to help the people that were injured out there in the highways or streets or whatever. But I'm so glad to see you guys standing there and Ms. Miller did a great job, I pushed very hard for that BSN. But, uh, you know, uh, sometimes I was wondering if a railroad train was gonna run over me, but, uh, so it didn't run over me, so I did okay and I'm very glad, you know, I know about all these accreditations you have to go through that, you know, cause I went through a lot of them. So, um, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Carranza. Chair recognizes, uh, Mr. Delgado.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, and I'll, I'll be quick, just, uh, you know, if there's anything that this pandemic has taught us, uh, it, it's scared a lot of people, it's affected a lot of people, even close family and friends, I'm sure of everybody, but if there's anything this pandemic has taught us, it's the need for... us, it's the need for not only individuals such as yourself, as well as the entire team in the South Campus, but it's the need for nurses, LVNs, healthcare, you know, the local facilities here in dire need of nurses, paramedics, EMS personnel. And it's definitely something that, you know, we thank wholeheartedly, you know, for all your efforts and for all your achievements, and please don't stop those achievements, keep them coming and, you know, definitely have our full support, so thank you so much.
Chair recognizes Dr. Rodriguez Tijerina.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Marisela Rodriguez Tijerina, interim president. I'm very proud of this team. They have literally worked incredibly hard during the holidays, weekends, and I will tell you how difficult it was. When we had the site visit for A C N, it was during the Texas freeze where some of the faculty, staff and administration did not have electricity or water, and we still had to do the site visit. So my point is, the interviews were being done in cars of some people, but we still did it, and it's just amazing how they said it's a team effort, it is definitely a team effort, and I truly am very proud of what we do when the times are tough. So, thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Very proud of all of you and your team. Thank you very much for all that you do for us. Next item is 5C, Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board Committee Appointments. Dr. Marisela Rodriguez Tijerina.
Yes, Marisela Tijerina, interim president for the record. Another proud moment for Laredo College. For the first time, Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board has selected three of our faculty members to serve in state committees. And we have Celinda Martinez, who's the Associate Professor of Biology, Natural Science Department Chair. She will be serving in T H E C B Texas Transfer Advisory Committee. We have Ms. Brianna Underbakey, who is the Professor of Criminal Justice, who will be serving in the Transfer Framework Field of Study for Criminal Justice. And I believe I saw him here, Mr. George E. McDonald. He will be serving in the T H E C B Texas Transfer Framework Field of Study in the Discipline for Business Management, and he is our Professor of Management, Business Management Department Chair. So we're very proud of these three faculty.
Congratulations.
Make us proud.
You'll make us proud, thank you. Next item is I have 5D, Introduction of Personnel, Personnel Actions. Dr. Marisela Rodriguez Tijerina.
Marisela Tijerina, for the record. We have Adriana Craddock, who will be the Director of Special Service and Counseling, Renee Montemayor, who will be the Professor of English, Professor of Spanish and Professor of Speech, Norma L. Martinez, Vocational Nurse, Nurse-Assisting Instructor and Nurse Laboratory Coordinator, Mary Sosa, Special Service Coordinator, Ms. Nancy Vella, who got a faculty degree advancement as Vocational Nurse Instructor, Sara Yortiz, Project Secretary, Tracy Ramos, Academic Advisor, Gerardo Riojas, Data Effectiveness Coordinator, Sarah Saldana, Academic Advisor, Gabriela D. Solis, STEM Coordinator, Jeanette Vasquez, Academic Advisor, Reynaldo R. Ramos, Full Stack Developer Programmer, and Sam Tovar, Gym Attendant for the South Campus.
Welcome. Welcome to our team. Is anybody here? Is anybody here to stand up and be recognized?
Congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Tijerina. Next item, we have a six, Faculty Senate Report, Cash Masahani. I know I saw him walk in.
Good evening. Good evening, board members. Board President, interim president, Dr. Rodriguez Tijerina, thank you for the opportunity. I wish, I wish I would have that kind of staff outside every time I made my reports, all my students and faculty cheering me on, that might be kind of helpful. I'll make my report as short as possible, I know that there are a lot of items on today's agenda, and I pray that you all have the courage and conviction to get through that. I just want to remind, because I think it's important, some of these faculties serve in some very essential roles. Remind the Board of Trustees, as well as everyone else here today, of who our leadership team is made up of, in the Faculty Assembly, in the Faculty Senate. Obviously, I serve as the organization's president, but we also have the Vice President, who's a professor of English, Ms. Victoria Rodriguez, who's not here at the moment. And then we also have our Faculty Senate Secretary, Ms. Lethysia Spillane, who's also a professor of government, like myself. And so I just wanted to remind the Board of who our leadership team is, should they come in the future and provide this report on my behalf or the faculty's behalf. So just a couple of items, I just want to update the Board onto some of the projects that the faculty is working on. I know I use this podium to come and talk about money a lot, but best assured that we are working on other things too, that are on other projects. My predecessor before me, as you all know, was Dr. Sinbikle, who was the former Faculty Assembly President, has now retired. One of the projects that she began during her term was the Memorial Brick Project, which was a project that sought to recognize the contributions of faculty and others who have contributed to this college over the years, who have retired or who have passed away. And if you go outside the memorial building, you'll see these bricks installed down below. And so what we're doing is we're resuming those conversations, and we're going to be renewing the project as well, and looking to finish the project that my predecessor began. There have been a lot of faculty and employees interested in getting that project completed, and it is our hope that we can get this done and moving forward in time for the 75th Anniversary Celebration, so that we can have this as part of the feature to recognize the contributions that past employees have in fact made to the college. Another project that the faculty is resuming, and I want the Board to know about this project, and that project is the Faculty Awards. I don't know if some board members remember, but there was a time at our convocations when certain faculty were distinguished for their role at the college. There was a whole presentation, there were videos, something that my predecessors worked on, and we're resuming that project as well. As one of our former colleagues came up here earlier, her name was Ms. Maria Lourdes de Gutierrez, talked about all of the work that faculty did during the pandemic, and so too did other employees. We want to finally take an opportunity to distinguish these employees, these faculty, for the hard work that they put in every single day, that they're shaping lives and reshaping lives. I'm here today because of the work of faculty like that. I wouldn't be here today if it weren't for those faculty members, some of which were my professors. So it's changed my life. So I want to take an opportunity to recognize their work. You could see the names of some of the faculty that'll be on that committee. So hopefully, we can come here in a few months or in a few semesters and honor those people before the Board for their contributions. Now, the last one. Of course, it's always got to have something about money here, eh? Leave it to me to talk about money, right? Well, this one I'll make it short because I'm not going to sit here and justify how faculty and how employees have earned the stipend that's being considered tonight. I think everyone knows what we've done, what everyone at this college has done during the pandemic. We've hammered that point over and over and over again. The contributions are noble, to say the least. Everyone sitting here today has contributed one way or the other to the pursuit of education, whether higher education or otherwise, in capacity as a professor, an administrator, as a student or something else. So you know the pursuit is noble of education. So I'm not going to get into justifying how that is earned by the employees. Everyone behind me earned it. So I'm asking that the Board do whatever it can to support whatever's max, the maximum possible, whatever's feasible, using those HER funds. I know that there were a number of changes in the way instruction was delivered during COVID. A former colleague of mine talked about it. So I'm not going to get too much into those conversations. It's my hope that, again, that the Board can do what it can to honor those employees. Again, remember, I always say all employees. I don't have maybe the right to advocate specifically for all employees, but when you have this podium, you'd be derelict in duty not to talk about the contributions of all of our employees. And I will say one thing, because I don't say it enough. Yes, I'm the Faculty Senate Leader, the Faculty Leader, and I am a faculty member, but as everyone here that's in the administration knows, I work very closely in all of the different divisions to offer services or work as an employee of the different divisions, just because, you know, having the time and wanting to get that exposure with the various deans, we work close together. So I have an obligation to come forward and advocate for non-faculty too, and what they've done has been, it's been amazing, the services that they offered during COVID. I think today is another opportunity that we have to honor those contributions. I know this may not be possible. I'd ask that the Board consider making such a stipend, which has been earned, payable in one sum. That may not be legally possible, that may be, I'm not counsel, so I can't speak to that. There are a number of reasons for doing so that might be good, as far as what's coming up in terms of the holiday, in terms of what's coming up with the morale, the logistics of having to pay employees twice. The Board needs to consider all those things. But at the end of the day, I just ask that the Board do whatever it can to compensate folks for these difficult times. And I'll say in conclusion, one more thing directly to the Madam President of the Board, thank you for including the faculty, including myself, on the search committee. I received your letter recently, and I wanted to thank you personally for the opportunity to serve on that committee.
You're welcome.
I've had a wonderful time on that, so thank you, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir, for that report. Anybody want to say anything? I'm going to go ahead and go to the next item. Associated Student Organization Report, Alan Cantu.
Good afternoon, board members, faculty, staff. It's a pleasure to be here. Like I said, Alan Cantu, for the record. I just want to say that this meeting, I have nothing to report. Next, we are still working on it, we're finalizing the details, but for next meeting, we will have something to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cantu. Next item is Classified Staff Counsel Report. We don't have a report, okay. The next item is the Consent Item.
I move that we approve the consent item, Madam Chair.
Second.
So I have a motion by Judge Martinez, I have a second by Esteban. Any discussion?
No.
No, no, I was in the second, but that's fine.
So there's no discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number 10 is Discussion and Possible Action. The next item is 10A, Appointing an Individual to Represent the Laredo College District as a Member of the Board of Directors of the City of Laredo Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone, TERS number two, also known as the COVs at Windfield. Ms. Lupita Zepeda and Dr. Marisela Rodriguez Tijerina. So like we had agreed, I have the names here in a box.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
May I comment?
So I have recognized Mr. Rangel.
Thank you. On this one, I wanted to call you, but I don't, I don't know, being that Rusty has told us, you know, you can't be discussing items and all this, so I wanted to see if it's a possibility to appoint somebody based on the Board, not based on choosing a name. That would be my recommendation. And the reason for that is because we just approved Mr. Delgado, which I applaud for the appraisal district, and it wasn't chosen from a piece of paper. So...
So you're making a motion?
I would like to nominate myself.
Okay, so Mr. Rangel has expressed the motion. Do I have a second?
I second.
So I have a second by Ms. Elizondo. Discussion. Chair recognizes Dr. Carranza.
Yes, I would like to nominate Mr. Mercurio Martinez, because he does have a lot of experience in this area, so.
Okay, so...
You can start calling.
So Rusty, now I have a motion and a second, and now I have another nomination.
Madam President, so there was a second to Mr. Rangel's motion.
Correct.
So that's the motion that's on the floor.
Okay.
And that would have to be disposed of before Dr. Carranza's motion can be seconded.
Okay, so I ask for the vote. All those in favor of appointing Mr. Rangel? I have one, two, three. Please raise your hand. So I have Ms. Elizondo, Ms. Vella. Can Mr. Rangel vote for himself?
He can.
Mr. Rangel and Ms. Mari, so I have four. Anyone else?
May I ask a question?
Chair recognizes Ms. Elizondo.
Can we have two members?
No.
No. It's only one member. Mr. Killa is here. Okay, so I have four. Anybody against? So I have Ms. Ramos. Dr. Carranza, against Mr. Rangel. So I'm taking a vote for Mr. Rangel. So are you for or against? Mr. Carranza.
Well, I didn't raise my hand the first time around.
She's asking.
I'm asking. Are you for, I mean, are you against?
Well, I'm against, I already made a motion for somebody.
Well, but we're going to get to that motion if this motion doesn't pass. So I need to vote.
No, I'm going to say no this time.
You're going to say no. Ms. Ramos? Mr. Delgado? Mr. Martinez? No, and myself. So we have five against, so motion does not pass. So the next motion is by Dr. Carranza, nominated Mercurio Martinez. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so it's seconded by Judge Martinez. So any discussion? Okay, so I'm going to ask for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I have Mr. Rangel, Mr. Martinez, Mr. Carranza, Ms. Elizondo, Ms. Mari. So I have five, four. Okay. So motion passes. Mr. Martinez will be our representative for the TERS Board. Mr. Killa.
Thank you.
He's got a representative now. Thank you. Next item is 10B, Adopt Resolution Supporting Applications to Become a Usage-Driven Foreign Trade Zone, number 94 designation. Dr. Marisela Rodriguez Tijerina.
Yes, Dr. Tijerina, for the record, we received two requests from community members in regards to those two different companies and their respective addresses, and so I'm just presenting to the Board, this is a second or third time, at least in my term, that we've had foreign trade zones. And I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Chair recognizes Mr. Delgado with a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Marisela, how does this negatively affect the college?
So I know Rusty is going to expand a little bit on that.
Sorry, Rusty.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Madam President, may I?
Chair recognizes Mr. Muir.
Thank you. So the foreign trade zone is a designation that is authorized by the United States Government, and it requires the consent of governing entities that are affected by the designation. And the ones that we've seen have carved out small spaces and warehouses where inventory goods are received and sit within that designation, and they're exempt from tariffs. So tariffs are not assessed on those items. And so, you know, presumably the owner of the items doesn't have to pay those fees. They, by designating them a foreign trade zone, they're also not taxed. And the Laredo College can tax real property and personal property, including inventory that sits inside of a warehouse, so that's the downside. The truth of the matter is, if you look at the value of what's in that warehouse, it's usually a small area, so in the grand scheme of things, it would be a loss of personal property income tax revenue, or personal property tax revenue that is very minor. But yes, that is the negative, the negative, the downside of approving that.
So we lose out on certain taxes that are normally paid to the college?
They would not be taxed, that's right. Laredo College would not be able to... The personal property is assessed once a year at the beginning of the year, and so personal property of that particular warehouse is appraised by the Webb County Appraisal District, and then we use our tax rate to tax that property, and there will be a carve-out of that section of the warehouse that is a foreign trade zone.
So how much does the college lose by continuing to have these foreign trade zones?
Well, you know, it depends, of course, on the value of the property that is there. But, you know, we could just speculate, let's say, that the entire inventory of a warehouse would generate five or $10,000 of tax revenue for the college. A portion of that would not be collected by the college. What that portion could be, I don't know. It depends on the value. It's going to depend on what the value.
So would each foreign trade zone that is approved negatively affects the budget, salaries, benefits, courses?
It's less property tax revenue.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So we have.
Motion to approve items 10B, one and 10B two.
Okay, so I have a motion by Ms. Mari. So I have a second. Second by Mr. Rangel. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 10C is Discussion and Possible Action on Obtaining Internal Auditing Services. Mr. Cesar Vela?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, Cesar Vela, Vice President of Finance. This one item was started as an inquiry regarding internal auditing services. I believe that tonight's meeting, we don't have to make a decision, but maybe the board can provide some input or guidance as to what the next step would be. We discussed this item in the Finance and Audit Committee. We certainly have a couple of options that we can explore regarding internal auditing services. One of them is having an in-house internal audit department. We are projecting that to be able to provide those services in-house, we would be looking at a budget of about $300,000 to do that. We also reached out to our external auditor, and they mentioned to us that they can provide internal auditing services. However, because we are engaged with them for external auditing services, we would not technically be able to call him internal auditors. But they could certainly have separate engagements to audit areas that we may think need to be reviewed. The cost would depend on the amount of work that would be needed. And then the other option is just to issue out a request for qualifications for internal auditing services. Now, based on our conversations with our external auditor, the cost to do that would probably be four times the external audit. Right now, we're paying around $80,000 for the external audit, so we're really looking at around $320,000. And again, it would depend on the scope of work that would be needed. But if we were to go that route, the first step would have would be to have a risk assessment by an internal auditor to determine what areas would need to be looked at. But again, at this point, my understanding is that it is an item that is up for discussion and, I guess, whatever the wishes of the board are regarding the next step to do.
So if we were to get a permanent auditor, that would be about $320,000? Is that what you're saying?
Around $300,000, yes.
$300,000. Or we can get a contractor that would come on a per, as needed basis?
Yes, we could actually schedule them quarterly or semiannually, depending on what areas we want to look at. Again, the first step would be probably to have them do a risk assessment of the institution and identify areas that we would need to look at.
Look at. Chair recognizes Mr. Delgado and then Ms. Vela.
I'll go ahead and defer to Ms. Vela if it's okay. If I'm in order.
I think I've been thinking about this, and I've mentioned it quite a bit, this internal audit. And I think this is a perfect time for us to do it, to find out and be a little bit more transparent and accountable, especially with what's going on with athletics and other areas. It's something that we should seriously consider. I, you know, it's a lot of money to have a full-time. It is. But if we can make some kind of a deal to where we can get them as needed, or like you said, quarterly, or, you know, whatever, we just need to be more transparent and be able to answer where our money goes. And that's, I think everybody's concerned.
Mr. Delgado, you're fine. Chair recognizes Ms. Mari.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know I was a part of the discussion that was held yesterday, and for the longest time as well. I have been in the situation, and so has Judge Martinez, where we had an internal auditor, per se. And for whatever reasons, that didn't turn out well. So my tendency would be, and tonight I would like to maybe make the motion that we go ahead and talk to our internal, our external auditors, I'm sorry, external auditors, and maybe have them offer us another another contract or another proposal, and that we start there, and then we use them, you know, as we need them, and then see what a whole year of scope of work would produce. And we see that they themselves recommend, you know what, you need an internal auditor full-time. I mean, that would be a recommendation I would hold. So that's my motion then, too.
So I have a motion by Ms. Mari. So I have a second by Ms. Ramos. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vela.
Thank you.
Oh, don't go anywhere. 10D is Select Internal Architect and Delegate to College President the Authority to Negotiate a Contract and Fees. Mr. Cesar Vela?
Yes, members of the board, we issued out a request for qualifications for architectural and engineering services. We did receive six responses. The committee evaluated those qualifications at the Tuesday Building Committee Meeting. And we do have the results. And you should have received a copy of the results. And I'll go ahead and read the results. The first, the first ranked firm is Cavazos and Associates Architects, followed by Sepulveda Associates, Inc., Able City LLC, Garza, Bombardier and Associates, Armco Industries, and Rabah Kissner, Inc. Right, as the agenda item mentions, we are asking that the board approve the rankings scored by the committee, and that they delegate to the college president the authority to negotiate a contract and fees with the highest-ranked proposer.
Chair recognizes Mr. Delgado and then Mr. Rangel.
Well, Madam Chair, if I'm in order, I would like to make a motion as per the committee's decision to select Cavazos and Associates Architects and to delegate to the college president the authority to negotiate a contract and fees.
So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
I heard two. I'm gonna call you on discussion. So I have a second by Ms. Ramos. Discussion. Mr. Rangel?
Yes, really quick. So we're only entering into contract with one?
Yes.
Architect?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to go ahead and comment that we did, we did go ahead and meet for the building committee. I am very happy to to approve local. I think local is the right way to go. I think it's, it's, we should keep, I think we have very qualified architects, engineers that are local. And I also support that. And that's, I have.
Chair recognizes Ms. Vela.
No, it was Ms. Elizondo.
Okay, so I have a, I have a motion by Mr. Delgado, and then a change. A second by Ms. Vela. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
You oppose?
Yes.
Okay.
I would like to state the reason after.
Opposed by Ms. Elizondo. So I have eight yes and one no. So motion carries to award it to the contract Cavazos and Associates Architects and to go ahead and give the authority to our interim president to negotiate a contract and fees.
Madam Chairman, I make a comment.
Chair recognizes Ms. Elizondo.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to congratulate all participants. They are very respectable firms. I'm glad that we are keeping local. Nonetheless, I want to put it on the record that, as you all recall, a couple months ago, this board selected that financial, the financial advisory service firm. I was not allowed to submit a scoring sheet, as I only heard two out of four presentations. I was told that in order to be fair to all firms, my scoring sheet will not be admitted. However, a board of trustees submitted this past Tuesday, I mean, this past Tuesday when the building committee met, a board of trustee submitted a scoring sheet without listening to our presentations. He only heard two out of six presentations. Yet, a submission was made for all of the, for all presentations. So at this time, I don't think that it's fair for the rest of the participating firm. And for this reason, I voted against. Now, I'd just like to put it on the record.
Madam Chair, if I may respond to that.
Chair recognizes Mr. Delgado.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, as the chair for the Finance and Audit Committee, yes, you weren't available for that committee meeting. You did not show up. You did not submit any records. I did receive the binders by way of Liz.
I did, too.
And I did, excuse me, I have the floor. And I did review all the records. I did ask the necessary questions that were required, and I did attend the committee meeting as necessary and as required by the chair of that particular committee.
May I, Madam Chair?
Chair recognizes Ms. Elizondo.
Dr. Maricela Rodriguez, I'd like to, right when we had that meeting, I did hear, I heard two out of four presentations. I had the materials. I reviewed them as well. I received a call from Dr. Maricela noting that as per the committee, since in order to be fair to all participants, I was not able to submit a scoring sheet. And I agree. So in this particular case, it was the same thing. Him physically appearing here and listening to two out of six scoring sheets, I don't think, I honestly think that it's the same scenario. So, and I mean, this motion already passed. I just wanted to put it on the record.
Mr. Muir, any comments?
No, no comments.
So motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Elizondo. Next item is 10E, Annexation.
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry.
Go through with the annexation for the Laredo College.
Oh, okay. Okay, so I have a motion by Judge Martinez on the annexation of new property which has been annexed by the City of Laredo pursuant to the Texas Higher Education Code Section 130.066. I have a second by Mr. Delgado. Any discussion? None heard?
Madam Chair?
Yes. The Chair recognizes Mr. Muir.
I think just very briefly before the vote, if Mr. Vela can briefly identify the tracks of land for the public to know, so the public's aware.
Chair recognizes Mr. Vela.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, the City of Laredo has had two cycles for property annexations, one on or about March 1st and the second on May 17, 2021. There currently, there's currently a third cycle that will be finalized in December. So as we were trying to get this approved, we are still gonna have to bring another cycle in December. But as Mr. Muir mentioned, the properties that are being annexed by the city are track number one, Rodriguez Ranch Track, and the meets and bounds of the properties are in your board packet. Track number two, Cuevas Stanley Track. Track number three, Martinez Track. Track number four, Mario Palos Garza Track. And track number five, Isleta Farms Track. The properties that were annexed on May the 1st are track number one, Emerald River View Track, 528 Track, track number three, Emma Commercial Track, and track number four, Marquez Track.
Thank you, Mr. Vela. Any discussion? None heard?
May I, Madam Chair?
Chair recognizes Judge Martinez.
Thank you, ma'am. Let me just, I do hope that the day will come where the Laredo Community College will actually have the entire county of Webb as a taxing entity. It's unfortunate that at the time, that the then-members of that board decided that strictly within the limits of the City of Laredo. But we also have to recognize that every other community college in the state of Texas actually has the entire county, with certain exceptions and where some other colleges, as an example, the Texas, South Texas College actually has two counties. And I hope that the day will come when Laredo College will actually have the, at least, the entire county of Webb as it, within, within its, and hopefully within that time, we can actually reduce the overall taxes to the to the City of Laredo taxpayers because we will have a far greater base to address that will actually bring in a better income to, for the benefit of the college. That's just an observation on my part. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Judge. Any other discussion? Chair recognizes Dr. Carranza.
I would like to follow up on that. As far as the county is concerned, Judge, you know, and former judge, it's been very hard. I have tried to push it over there with them, and I don't know, I know you have tried too. But we have to work with the state. That's where, that's where it is. Even when I spoke to certain people in the state, they sort of, you know, move you aside. But it does not mean that we cannot market ourselves to get in there, you know, start working with these ranchers out there and start moving, showing what we have. But we have to be aggressive if we want it. We cannot be just, you know, okay, okay, okay. No, we gotta go after them because they do send students to the college. I mean, they send students to the college here. Yes, they might pay a few bills more, but that's about it. So if we want to, the county involved, we need to start working with their commissioners. There's where the game starts. That's all I have to say to that.
Call for the question.
Any other? Okay, so I call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Vela.
Thank you, Mr. Vela.
Thank you, Ms. Vela.
Next item, 10F, Approval of Emergency Response Management. Associate of Applied Science Degree Program, Mr. Alberto Hernandez.
Good evening, board members. Alberto Hernandez, Dean of Workforce Education. My agenda item tonight is to request your approval of a new program in the area of emergency response management. As Mr. Delgado mentioned earlier, COVID did highlight many of the needs of services that we have for the community, not only related to COVID, but also we did experience the freeze, the Texas freeze. We have, you know, a surge on the border. All these incidents call for strong emergency response. So we recently had an advisory committee meeting to see the program viability and the needs of these types of programs. Listed on the screen are the members who participated in the advisory committee. If you notice, they're all the heads of the major law enforcement agencies or the emergency management for the state. So in this meeting, the information that was presented was programmatic goals along with the program curriculum. So the committee unanimously agreed that the program would have a great impact for the existing and the future workforce of the community. The program being proposed will be housed under the Homeland Security Studies Department. Earlier this year, we started the Homeland Security Studies Program with a focus on law enforcement careers and law enforcement support careers. This program, the newly proposed program, will focus solely on emergency response management. That program itself will have two tracks, a general emergency response management and a fire science specialization. We did partner with, or we did meet with the fire department, and there is a opportunity to form a synergy between both entities. So we are offering tracks in a fire science specialization. Here are the list of program awards that are for the respective specializations. The emergency response management specialization would have two certificates of one semester, a one-year, and an AAS in emergency response. The fire science specialization would have two one-year degrees, one specifically for the community who are interested in entering the fire service, and one for existing fire service, fire service, the fire service workforce that's existing. We'll also have an AAS in fire protection and safety technology. That one, again, is for the entry personnel, and an AAS in fire protection and safety management for existing personnel. Uh, that one again is for the entry personnel and an AAS in Fire Protection and Safety Management for existing personnel.
Madam Chair.
Very good. I'm gonna recognize, uh, Chair recognizes Mr. Delgado.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, and I just wanna thank you, Dean Hernandez, as well as the fire department and every, every other stakeholder that, you know, was involved in this. I know we started in the initial phases of this with just a, a quick conversation and, and it was, really was a pleasure to, to see everything, uh, you know, that you were able to do just from a simple conversation and, and getting everybody together and, and seeing this through. And, and I really, and I know everybody here on the board appreciates all your hard work and your efforts on this. And, and to do it so quickly, too. I wasn't, definitely wasn't expecting this when I was having those conversations, uh, with, with the fire department. So, I, I, I definitely thank you for, for all your efforts. Uh, and Madam Chair, if I'm in order, I'd like to motion to approve, but I know Ms. Ramos had a question, so.
Ms. Ramos. Chair recognizes Ms. Ramos.
Uh, Ms. Hernandez, so how many, uh, students are we talking about being interested? Or would the program be available to, uh, you know, if we, if we vote for, or it, it passes and it's approved?
Because of the specialization, we're looking at cohorts of twenty students. Uh, similar to the nursing, uh, program, uh, we, we really wanna limit the size of, of the cohort, uh, just to make sure that we are really emphasizing the skills necessary.
And we are, uh, addressing or we are looking towards what type of individual from the community that would want to seek this type of Associate of Applied Science?
So roughly, uh, for the, for the, for the fire science specialization in particular, we would mirror the, uh, requirements for the, for the fire department, right? This is kind of like a pre-entry, uh, to the, uh, the fire department, uh, service. Uh, for the Emergency Response Management, really, there's no, um, age limit or, you know, it's just anyone who's interested in that type of service. Uh, there is a tremendous shortage for this type of training. So FEMA does offer some, some trainings, but they're very, very short. We're talking about a weekend trainings that really don't address, uh, the emergency response, you know, like it needs to be. And that's one of the things that the heads of these agencies mentioned, that their work, that their workforce isn't trained in these specializations.
And I just wanna conclude my comments with thanking you and your staff and the entire, uh, entire staff that works with making these programs available, because you're collaborating with the community, you're providing something that's needed. And I know that there's gonna be great benefits from the fire department and other individuals who would like to aspire to be part of that fire department, because they have the exams very frequently. So, thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
The Chair recognizes Ms. Vella.
You have your hand, right.
Yeah.
Dr. Carranza. Dr. Carranza?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
You know, it's, it's great that you came up with this associate degree. We need it.
Yes.
You know, not just the fire department, but it's needed also in the public, in the public works. There are a lot of people that would hire businesses that have this knowledge, you know, and, uh, so they can keep their business safe. So, it's a, it's a good degree. And I mean, yes, you're gonna, maybe at the beginning, you might not have as many students as you want, but before you know it, you're gonna have more than you want. And I congratulate you on this.
Thank you, thank you, uh, uh, Dr. Carranza. And, and I really thank the board for their support, uh, Mr. JD for, Delgado for, uh, giving me that lead, uh, to the fire department. And it did move rather quickly. Uh, but, uh, I have, uh, Dr. Arizola to thank, uh, Dr. Rodriguez as well. Uh, I bother all of them on a daily basis, asking about these programs and, and just, you know, asking for their feedback, Dr. Fred as well. Uh, and it's, it's just, uh, you know, a, a team effort, but this program will impact the community. Uh, it would provide gainful employment for our students, uh, a career for our students, and it would ensure the safety of our community.
Yep.
So again, thank you for, for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I have a motion? Do I have a second? Oh, I'm sorry.
You had some comments, Mr. Rangel.
Here.
Mr. Rangel.
Chair recognizes Mr. Rangel.
Yes, thank you, um, JD, great job on this, you know, but of course, it comes from, from you guys, administration. Dr. Arizola, Eduardo, you guys did a great job. And I did hear about this, you know, and like, like it's been said, it, it was fast. And, uh, it was lightning fast. And I, I applaud you for doing this, because we, it, this is in dire need for our community. I think it's just another added tool for the, for the Laredo College. So, I wanna congratulate, yeah, administration and of course, your, your expertise on this. And I wanna go ahead and second that motion.
Okay, so I have a.
Yeah, you did, you beat me again.
So, Ms. Vella said she had already seconded.
No, but she said she would.
So, I have a, a first and I have a second.
Aye.
Any discussion? None heard? Uh, I'm gonna call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next item is 10G, Approval of 2022, 2023 Laredo College Academic Calendar. Dr. Fred Solis.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, President Deherina and colleagues. Uh, as is customary every year, we bring before the board for their approval, the annual calendar, academic calendar, that sets the start dates of both our long semesters and our summer sessions. Uh, this year, we're getting a jump on that calendar, so that we can begin early processing for that year. And so, as we prepare for that, uh, we'd like to have it approved as soon as possible, so that way, we can make all the changes in our administrative system and actually begin preparing for that.
Motion to approve?
Second.
So, I have a motion by, uh, Ms. Matis. I have a second by Mr. Rangel. Any discussion? None heard? I call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Solis, Dr. Solis. Next item is 10H, Hearing and Approval of Proposed One-Time Stipend to Eligible Laredo College Employees, funded by the U.S. Department of Education Higher Education Emergency Relief Fund, HERF, and other sources, including discussion of the public purpose served, possible closed session to discuss legal issues with Laredo College Council, pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551 dot 071, Ms. Deherina and Mr. Cesar Vella. Mr. Vella?
Good evening. Cesar Vella, BP of Finance for the record. Uh, this next item is, uh, to request approval, uh, from the board, uh, for a one-time performance pay stipend to all eligible employees, full-time employees. The funding is coming out of the HERF funding. Um, we do, um, have some items, uh.
To discuss? I don't know. Chair recognizes Mr. Muir?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Uh, Madam President and Board Member, so the Finance Committee did, uh, discuss this item here. There are some legal issues that we visited about in executive session, and they primarily had to do with the sourcing of the funds, the gift of public fund issues. As, as we all know, that the Texas Constitution prohibits the gifting of public funds. And then the conditions, there's a grant, it's a, uh, Higher Education Emergency Relief Fund Grant that is going to be the source of funds for the majority of the stipends. So, we discussed that. I'm happy to talk to you about those legal issues in executive session, if you'd like. The, the bottom line is that the stipend, uh, in order to get around the gift of public funds issue has to be used, uh, for, uh, for the employees, but they have to receive additional responsibilities and duties. And I think that the plan administration is proposing is for those, and they have to be tied to COVID. And so, for those duties to involve a training program that would be, uh, implemented over time, over, you know, I don't know if it's a period of a month or two, but I believe administration is recommending that, that the board delegate the authority to administration to implement that plan.
Okay. Chair recognizes Ms. Matis.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, do you see the need for us to go, or it's self-explanatory pretty much, I think, unless, unless, Madam Chair, you feel? That the board, that the board wants to go into executive session? If not, if I may be allowed, just to, you know, preempt this discussion by, by saying, yes, I put the item on the agenda and the original, my original intent was, uh, to bring about a discussion for awarding our employees, our full-time employees, some sort of stipend or bonus, you know, because they worked so hard during the COVID season. And so, that was the whole, my plan. And as I presented it when I submitted the agenda item, I was happy to hear that after the discussion that was held at the Finance Committee, uh, a, a lot of good, healthy discussion was held, that, uh, funding sources were identified. Uh, they may have some stipulations to them, because we, we will be using that grant money, as Mr. Rusty Muir just so stated. Uh, so I'm not sure, like I said, if you still want further discussion in executive session or not.
Chair recognizes Mr. Muir.
Thank you, Madam President and Ms. Matis. I, I think that it's not necessary to go into executive session. I do recommend that administration share some detail to you and to the members of the public as to what the training will involve and how the administration of that will take place. So, we don't have to have a lot of detail, but some, some.
Well, my motion, if I make the motion, but stipulating all that with that cover?
I think we should still receive the information.
So, which should go first?
And that could be done, yes, the motion can be made first and then this, that could be presented during discussion, correct?
Well, Madam Chair, if I'm in order and if I may be allowed, I'd like to move that, uh, Laredo College award a one-time performance pay stipend to each full-time Laredo College employee in the gross amount of $5,000. While most employees will receive the performance pay stipend from the Higher Education Emergency Relief Fund, those employees who are not eligible to receive pay from the HERF fund will be paid from the Laredo College General Operating Fund. As a condition to receiving the funds, all employees who receive a performance pay stipend must fully participate in a COVID-19-related training program to be administered over a definitive period of time, as implemented by the, our interim Laredo College President. The public purpose served for dispersing the performance pay stipend will be the additional COVID-19 training and other activities that faculty and other employees will receive under the program beyond the duties they are required to perform according to their job descriptions and employment contracts. That is my motion.
Okay, so before I ask for a second, I do have two board members that had questions prior to this, the third.
But I think you need a second first.
The second first, yes. Do we have, I have to do the second first?
Okay.
So, second, Dr. Carranza or Dr. Esteban? Okay, so second by Mr. Rangel, so we'll go into discussion. Chair recognizes Ms. Ramos.
I had wanted to, um, if I was in order, to, to go into executive session, because I did not come to the meeting yesterday for, I mean, the finance, I mean, meeting. So, I always just wanted to get clarification. But if there's some questions that I could ask right now, then I'd be glad to get answers here, or if we have to go into executive session. My, my, my intent was to make a motion to move the item to executive session, right? Because I had some questions, but if we can talk about it here, um, without speaking, uh, on individuals or anything else like that?
Yes.
Then I can ask the questions.
That would be fine.
Okay, so I'll come back when everybody's finished, to ask the questions.
So, Chair recognizes Judge Martinez.
My, my comment was that, uh, since this was actually addressed in, in executive session with the Finance Committee, and there were some specific stipulations that were brought up, uh, which of course, were, uh, discussed at length, uh, by a legal counsel. My, my observation or my comment going right along with Ms. Matis is that those items that were properly stipulated as conditions on it to be part of the overall agreement as to come, coming through with the stipend to all full-time employees of Laredo College. And that, that would be my additional observation or comments in reference to the, uh, the, the motion that already been, uh, moved and seconded, uh, by, by our board. And simply just to make sure that those additional observations are, are properly added to, to this, uh, uh, motion, uh, as agreed upon or stipulated by our legal counsel. That's, that's the extent.
Chair recognizes Dr. Carranza.
Yes, now, thank you, Madam Chair. One thing when dealing with stipends, I, I think like the attorney said, it's better we take it into executive session. And because there's a lot of people that dealt with stipends. I dealt with stipends when I was in college, and I know what happened. We even boycotted. We were the first school of nursing to boycott in Austin. And it had to do with stipends. And so, you know, when we talk about stipends, you don't wanna open a door either, you know? So, I would like to, uh, basically take it into executive session where we can discuss it, and whatever we discuss stays there. That's what I have to say, Madam Chair.
Well, I have a motion and a second, Mr. Muir. I've been asked by two board members to take it to executive session.
But my motion doesn't come to Laredo.
But, I mean, their motion doesn't count, because we have a motion on the floor, so.
There is a motion on the floor. I think that the, if the desire to go into executive session to discuss legal issues about the pending motion is an incidental motion, you can make that one now and not have to act on the one that's on the floor, and we could go into executive session. So, if somebody made a motion to go into executive session on this particular item and that was seconded, we could go into executive session, come back out and take up the motion that's pending on the floor.
Chair recognizes Mrs. Matis?
No, I was, I'm sorry. I was just saying that I think either Dr. Deherina is gonna make a presentation and, or Mr. Vella, so maybe that will answer some of the questions, and if not, then, I mean, I don't mind going into executive session. But I don't know. Were you going to expound on the, the, these, uh, conditions that we're talking, not conditions, if we're looking for a better term?
Chair recognizes, uh, Dr. Rodriguez Deherina.
Dr. Deherina, for the record, um, basically, what we wanna implement is, uh, we have the system called NeoGov, and it's for all full-time employees. And what we want to implement is a training station about what happens to, to employees after returning from COVID, how to create, uh, a better working place to invite students and community and, and staff to come in. So, uh, then afterwards, every department is going to create an action plan of how we're gonna create these strategies. And it's going to be an action plan that we're gonna review regularly and document, um, as the majority of the full-time will be covered by the HERF grant, federal funding. And the thirteen that are, do not qualify under the, the federal grant, uh, will be paid out of, uh, the general operating.
Mr. Vella, did you have anything else?
Uh, Madam Chair, I believe that Dr. Deherina, uh, covered the items. But as, uh, legal counsel had mentioned, uh, we discussed the items, uh, regarding the gifting of public funds and also, uh, the allowability of the expense under the grant. Uh, we did consult with the Department of Ed and we did get a response that, uh, bonuses, uh, and, and performance pay payments were allow, allowable cost under the grant.
Did that answer your questions?
Yeah.
I, I just still had another question.
Okay. So, Chair recognizes Mrs. Ramos?
So, uh, my question was this, because we were tasked with this, or we were provided with this information at our school district is, will this, um, stipend bonus, whatever the word is gonna be called, you know, for, for, from, from this, uh, motion, is it gonna be tied to the salary for retirement purposes? Is, is my question. Um, I, I feel like there needs to be some clarification for that. Um, and also, um, it, to explain a little bit more about how these monies are designated from the government and for the public right now, given the situation that we're in right now with the items on the agenda. I think we need to explain that also, because for a person that it might be, uh, not understanding the financial aspect of it, they might consider this an opportunity for us to be able to provide other monies or where can, where else can we use these monies? And so, that's my question. I just want clarification. I wanna make sure that, that everything's clarified and, uh, before we take the vote.
So, Dr. Deherina, for the record, um, uh, Ms. Carranza did confirm with TRS, and it will be added into the retirement. Uh, and again, it's a one-time stipend not to be carried over to the fiscal year 2023. So, that's a very important, it's a one-time stipend where 1.77 will be coming from the federal.
No, actually, I'm sorry, it's 2.7 from the, 2.7 million from the, uh, HERF funding and 65,000 from general operating.
Any, uh, Chair recognizes Dr. Carranza?
Yes, I hope we bring this to an end right quickly. But, uh, what you said, Ms., uh, Dr. Deherina, is, uh, it is correct, you know, you know, the stipends is, is a good thing. But the problem is, over here, you know, our grant, what, when our grant money runs out, then what? You know, where are we gonna get money? We're gonna go dig here, deep, borrow from Paul over here, to pay Peter over here? Or do you have, or there a plan already to take care of this when your grant money runs out? Because I know what happens when grant money runs out on stipends. I already know that, since I was, when I was a young student.
Dr. Carranza, this is a one-time stipend?
It's a one-time, but how about the rest? I know, you'd be surprised how many people, you know, you know, when it comes to money, it's a different ballgame. No matter what you tell me or what are you gonna pick up, when it comes to. No matter what you tell me or what are you going to pick up, when it comes to money, people think differently. Why come I didn't qualify for that? Why come I didn't get that? You know, I, you know, I wasn't, you know, they're going to come up with some different stories. So, you know, I don't know, you know, it's, it's a good deal, I assume. And I hate to assume because you know the word assume what it means. But, you know, the thing is that if you're going to go for it, yeah, I'll vote for it too, you know, if it's a good, it's right now, it's good because we have the money.
Now, Mr. Vella, on this HERF relief fund, if we use it, if we do not use it, we lose it, is that correct?
That's correct.
That is correct. The funding is available through May 2022 unless an extension is granted. Now, to answer one of the questions that Ms. Ramos had, this grant can be used for defraying expenses associated with coronavirus, which includes lost revenue, which we are doing that for this fiscal year, reimbursement for expenses already incurred, technology costs, which we have been using it for technology costs associated with the transition to distance education, faculty and staff training, which will be part of this stipend, and payroll, and making additional emergency financial aid grants to students, which we have also been making.
Thank you, sir, for the clarification.
Chair recognizes Mr. Delgado.
Oh, thank you. Shoot. You lost. I did, no, okay. I definitely wanted to implore and thank, you know, the administration as well as Ms. Martinez for, for bringing this item up. I definitely feel that we do need to do more. I know everybody here will agree, you know, that we need to do as much as we can for our faculty, staff, and administration. And I'm grateful that, you know, we're able to include everybody and able to find ways to make sure that those that, you know, aren't eligible to receive it as per the federal grant money, that, you know, we're able to find a way, way to do that. So I just want to thank you, Mr. Vella, and thank you, Dr. Marisela, for that as well as Ms. Martinez, so thank you.
Call for the question.
Thank you.
So do we still want to go into executive session?
No, call for the question.
Okay, so I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, colleagues, thank you.
Madam Chair, may I just mention one comment?
Chair recognizes Mr. Rangel.
Yes, I want to go ahead and commend Ms. Ms. Martinez for, for bringing this, just like Trustee Delgado said, you know, we can't really speak a lot on what we spoke in executive session, but there was a comment that was made by one of the trustees that said that, you know, COVID hit us and it transitioned our professors on having to do a lot of more work and administration. So I don't want to say who exactly said that, but, you know, it is very true, you know? And, and I work for an educational institution, I know Ms. Ramos as well, and, and it has transformed and made us work 10 times more than, 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 than where we're at. So I want to applaud Ms. Martinez for bringing this item and I just want to go ahead and, and tell staff that the board is behind you and supports each and every one of you, no matter what type of tier you're at. It just, each and every one of you deserves this stipend.
Exactly. Thank you. Chair recognizes Mrs. Ramos.
I just also want to echo the, the sentiments of Mr. Rangel and the rest of the board members. This is a, an opportunity to motivate, to continue. The pandemic has transitioned us and I, as an employee of public service, I, it's been very difficult because we have had to change the way that we are in the teaching with the students and everything else. So I commend everybody, not only faculty, but faculty, staff, administration, everybody who has come to the, to the point and, and forked the road and said, I'm going to take this challenge. And so this opportunity motivates individuals to continue and to just say, you know what? We can do this and we can continue with this. And so I, I thank the board for, for voting for this item and for allowing our employees to be able to, to move forward and to at least get some, some relief for right now. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Ms. Elizondo.
What item are we on? Are we still, we voted for something?
We're still in the same item.
10H, it's common.
10H.
Give me one minute.
No, I mean, just getting to the point, I'm looking at the clock and we say you have, we have way through the agenda. No way through the agenda.
Okay, doctor. I'm recognizing Ms. Elizondo, we'll, we'll get to you. Elizondo?
I just want to echo everyone's words and, and thank you so much, Ms. Martinez, for always thinking about our employees. As you all know, we couldn't, nothing could work without you all, so you're truly appreciated. Faculty, staff, administration, and, and everyone that plays, that plays an important role here. And I want to recognize Cash because the, the Senate President, because every single time for the past couple of months, he has been advocating for this raise. Unfortunately, he was not placed on the agenda by administration, but thankfully Board of Trustees addressed it and we're so, so happy to bring this money here.
Chair recognizes Ms. Vella.
I just, I think.
Still going, doctor.
Hey, I say one minute.
No, no, you got your three minutes.
I just want to commend everybody and I think this is a big thank you. I wish we could do more, but I think it's a lot more than people expected, it's a lot more than we expected. But I, I, I know, having been there, the work that was involved and wow.
Good job.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, ma'am.
Okay, Dr. Carranza, moving on.
No, no, okay, I'll give you one more.
Oh, you have one more, okay. Chair recognizes Dr. Carranza.
Okay, I know you're talking about the pandemic, but I work with a pandemic every day.
Yes.
I have people visit me for food, food, gift cards, I do it every day. So what I'm hearing here is just a one thing, a one-time thing. So I do it every day. So, you know, I don't, that's why I, you know?
Okay.
We need to do more, is what you're saying. Item 10.
Thank you. Item 10I. Approval of Board Member Travel and Reimbursement of Reasonable Travel Expenses As Per Laredo College Board Policies BBG Local, Board Members Compensation and Expenses and BBH Local, Board Members Conventions, Conferences and Workshops, 2021 Higher Education Leadership Conference. Dr. Marisela Rodriguez DiGherina.
Yes, Dr. DiGherina, for the record, we got an invite from the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board for the 2021 Texas Higher Education Leadership Conference. And in regards to board members, this is offered to new trustees that some of you all have gone in the past. And Ms. Elizondo has voiced interest in this conference. And just to let the board know, I know the last time we talked about travel, it is board-related by the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board and the amount to reimburse the, Ms. Elizondo would be $1,150.49 and that would include hotel registration of $350 and the mileage or rental and everything else involved with, with travel.
Where is this conference going to be?
In Austin.
And just for clarification purposes, if I may, this is our required training that I need to attend to.
Motion to approve.
Second.
So I have a motion by Ms. Martinez, I have a second by Mr. Rangel. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is 10J, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve a Board Member Travel Expense Reimbursement Request Considered by the Laredo College Board of Trustees on August 19, 2021. Under Laredo College Board Policies BBG Local, Board Members Compensation and Expenses and BBH Local, Board Members Conventions, Conferences and Workshops. Ms. Karina Carri Elizondo.
What is this?
Okay, I decided to bring this item back as last time, though this board wasn't able to take an action. There were not enough votes either to approve or deny. So it is my recommendation that we proceed with the, with the approval of the reimbursement of this travel for Mr. Esteban Rangel. As you all, as you all can see, this particular travel was already approved a month before, prior to Mr. Rangel's departure, there was a, a, I'm sorry, conference fee paid beforehand by the college and that indicates obviously that the organization properly paid the conference fee prior, prior to his arrival. So I'd like to ask for consideration to, to approve this.
My understanding was the conference was paid for Dr. Solis.
Yes.
And he was not going to be able to attend, so Dr. Solis invited Mr. Rangel to go on his behalf, is that correct? So it was never brought to the board for approval for a board member to travel, is that correct?
That's correct, it was not put on the agenda.
Agenda, okay.
So basically what the college said, but also Mr. Rangel is $1,918 and 3 cents?
Yes.
I saw more.
So I have a motion.
Second.
So I have a motion to approve by Judge Martinez, I have a second by Dr. Carranza. Any discussion?
Yes, discussion. So this was.
So Chair recognizes Mr. Delgado.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this travel was approved by the previous president, so the previous president can approve travel?
Yes.
For board members?
So our employee can approve travel?
It was.
So the employee of the board can approve travel at any given time?
The president has that authority, that is correct.
Does that, is that on the policy?
No. No.
Because I believe just like the previous item that was just brought up for Ms. Elizondo, trustee Elizondo, board members approve travel for board members, not, employees don't approve travel for board members. I, I think I'm a little confused on that.
Madam Chair.
Well, the, the, the understanding was that automatically it would also acknowledge the, the travel of a member of the board representing the college. So basically, I mean, that was the, the implication, if I may use that term.
But the policy that we follow doesn't indicate that the president has any authority to approve travel for board members.
Yes.
Because the president, if I do say so respectfully, is the board's employee.
Absolutely.
Is that, I mean, do I have that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Chair recognizes Ms. Ramos.
Under BBG legal, a member's expenses of a board shall not receive any renumeration or emolument of office, but they shall be entitled to reimbursement for their actual expenses incurred in performing their duties to the extent authorized and permitted by the board. This is coming from the Education Code 130.082D. And so I agree with Mr. Delgado that the, but the board did not hear the reasons, what, what, what conference was this? What was it for the purpose of? Even though he was not, the individual in question was not serving as an official representative of the board, which is coming from BBG local for expense reimbursement. So it, it is something that we, we should ask the question because an employee of ours gave the permission for, for the gentleman to go, Mr. Rangel in this case, without our prior knowledge and without our consent. So we, we were not, now we're faced with having to decide to pay as Mr., as Dr. Solis is no longer with us, so.
Madam. Chair recognizes Ms. Elizondo.
Okay.
Just, I just have a comment, if Mr. Rangel was under the impression that it was authorized by the college, why is it his fault? Why is it his fault now he incurred all these expenditures and now the board comes and says, we're not going to pay it, even though there was a previous transaction for him to, to attend this conference prior to his departure? Literally a month, a month elapsed and it was never brought out to his attention. So for this reason, I call for, for the discussion so we could, if you could please call for a vote. Unless you want to speak, Mr.?
No. What I was going to say is that.
Chair recognizes Dr. Carranza.
Thank you. I knew about that seminar. I don't know if the rest of you did, I mean, I didn't apply for it.
None of us knew, the only one knew was Dr. Solis.
You know, and like I told you one time, you know, doctors do have, and the presidents do have some discretion if they have the monies.
If we have the monies.
Okay, so he was the only one that applied, I'm sure you got the material to read, we get it all the time here. I mean, all of a sudden I hear all these no, 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 you know?
Well.
I mean, speak up, be, be honest, you know, so he was the only one person that could go, you know? If there would have been three, he would have chose them out of three.
Call for the question, Madam Chair. So I'm going to go ahead, Mr. Muir, any, any comments before I call for the, for the vote?
No comments, no.
Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Raise your hand. So it's one, two, three, four, five. So Mr. Rangel can vote for his item? Just to be sure, Mr. Muir.
Yes, I believe that, that he's not prevented from voting, he has the opportunity to vote for his item.
Thank you.
Okay, so motion carries. Thank you. Next item is 10K, Approval of Laredo College Board of Trustees Goals, Ms. Jackie Levin Ramos.
I have provided the list of the items that we talked about at the retreat and I've given you the proposed goals that were provided. And I went ahead and separated them by the different topics on those pages that are listed there on your, on your desk. There were some that were delegated or referred to the student, another one to the board, the enrollment and recruitment and the administration. And so with the assistance of Dr. DiGherina, we went ahead and provided these goals in the front and in the first page and divided them into student success, funding and resource, board governance, and executive search. Under student success, which is the one that has the most, we included all of the items that were suggested to increase traditional enrollment, to improve retention, to expand workforce education programs and additional bachelor's degrees, bachelor's degree programs, to promote a more diversified campus and enhancing student life programs and community services, to improve customer service, to continue to actively increase the percentage of 25 to 34-year-olds in Texas who hold a certificate or degree and adhere to the TH, THECB 60 by 30 Texas Plan, establish a student success committee to support the quality of all college programs and services, establish a career services center to connect students to community career services and to monitor the impact of COVID-19 pandemic on student success and equity. Under funding and resources, we added ensure the continued investment of technology and provide adequate facilities. Under board governance, we added develop new board member orientation trainings and other workshops, develop a board procedures manual, continue updating college local board policies, provide effective leadership to the college and the community through advocacy and professional development, uphold fiduciary responsibilities and expand policy and partnership efforts with other institutions of higher education, local, state, and national agencies and organizations to improve student outcomes and pathways to success. And finally, the executive search, complete the search process for a new president, ensure process is equitable and transparent and hire a dynamic qualified candidate that will prepare LC for 2030 to 2040. All of these items were listed before as suggested from the different participants at the board retreat and I went ahead and just provided them for you for your reference. If it meets your needs or and it meets what we want to do, I would, would make a motion to approve the, the proposed goals. And also I wanted to add that I did put the, the establish the career services center to connect students to community career services and the student success committee because it has already been established prior to us adopting for, for the goals. But this way we can do a checklist, by the end of the year, we know that we have accomplished, hopefully, the majority of them. Of course, some of them will be continuous through the next years.
I'll second that motion, Madam Chair. So I have a, a motion by Ms. Ramos and I have a second by Ms. Martinez. Any discussion? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ramos.
Thank you.
The next item is information items, 11A, Enrollment Update, Ms. Andrea Lopez.
Good evening, members of the board, LC administration and meeting attendees. For the record, my name is Andrea Lopez and I am the Associate Dean of Enrollment Management and Student Success. And I'm excited tonight to be presenting the first of many enrollment updates. And so I want to start off by highlighting our second start term. This term was created, it's an eight-week term and it was intended to serve as a just-in-time option for students that were in, coming to a. that were in, coming to us a little bit late in the registration period. And so it's worth noting that we had about two-hundred-and-eight students who enrolled during the first week of, of classes for the fall semester up until the start of the second start program. And so those two-hundred-and-eight could have potentially, we could have lost that enrollment. And so we were able to offer options that began October 18th, which was last Monday, and that way they don't miss out on, you know, instructional days during the first week of class. So we had those students who took advantage of the second start term, and we did experience a forty-four percent enrollment increase compared to last fall's second start term. So we had a preliminary enrollment count of about one thousand one hundred and forty-nine compared to last fall's seven hundred and ninety-four. So we, we do plan to continue the second start for the spring semester, and we are offering more course options for students so that they can take advantage of that. I also want to congratulate Dean Cortez and her area because they're also experiencing an upward enrollment trend. And so currently, they do have and enroll a headcount of one thousand three hundred and seventy-two students who are taking advantage of the continuing education programs that we're offering. That is an eighty-nine percent headcount increase from last fall's quarter one. It's also worth noting that the disciplines with the highest enrollment are criminal justice with five hundred and fifty-one students, computer information systems with two hundred and forty-four, and our occupational and safety courses with a hundred and seventeen. Registration is ongoing. We still have some courses on the schedule for November, so the students and community can still take advantage of those. And our quarter two will begin in December. And finally, I have, I want to announce that registration for winter semester 2021 and spring 2022 will begin on Monday. That is November 1st, 2021. And so the winter semester, as you know, is a three-week mini term that we offer to students, and this is one hundred percent online instruction. And I'm also very proud of my team, two directors, which are currently here, Ms. Aguilar and Ms. Adriana Cradock, who will be working during the winter semester to provide student service support to these students who are taking advantage of our winter semester term. We currently have about twenty-eight courses to offer for, during winter semester. And so we have already, my office is located in Lerma Peña, I'm right in the middle of the action, and we've already begun seeing students coming in, you know, so that they can get advised early, they can complete their FAFSA applications, and so we're very excited for the start of this registration period. So it was very brief.
Indeed.
But I'm happy to entertain any questions, should you have any.
Anybody have any questions for Ms. Lopez?
Wonderful news.
Chair recognizes Ms. Elizondo.
Thank you. Well, first of all, congratulations. It's so exciting to know that, that students are coming back, whether they're in person or on the computer. It's, it's very, very, very warming to hear that we're, you guys are doing an amazing job, and, and please keep it up because we need, we need those funds.
Thank you, thank you.
Anyone else?
Great job, great job.
Great job.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next is the student success committee report. Ms. Cynthia Maris.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had our first meeting on Monday, and I'd like to thank my colleagues, Ms. Ramos and Ms. Elizondo, for being in attendance, as well as administration and staff. We basically used the time to organize ourselves, per se, and putting some thoughts together as to the direction of the committee in terms of its goals and objectives. So we've outlined that, and some of them, you've seen them here, part of the Board of Trustees' goals that Ms. Ramos presented a little while ago. But we're very excited to move forward. We decided to meet a monthly, at least for a while, until we, we felt that we were already on the road to, to success. And so, and then after that, we'll decide maybe quarterly. So you'll be hearing from us on a monthly basis, or if not, at the most, on a quarterly basis. But we're excited, and thank you all for allowing us the opportunity to come together and revitalize this success, this committee, because it was formed back in 2016, 15, but it just never got off the ground. So now with so many exciting things happening here on our campus, and as the, the change, the dynamic changes that were just, you know, discussed also earlier by faculty and staff and everybody, you know, it's, it's a whole new world out there now. And the new normal is, is very different, and so we have to adapt and, and meet those concerns and the needs of our students as well.
Good job.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Maris, Ms. Ramos, and Ms. Elizondo. Appreciate it. Next item is 11C, status of contracting with a new food vendor to provide vegetarian, vegan menu options. Ms. Karina Elizondo.
This is actually an information item from Mr. Cesar. I'll be happy to elaborate as well.
Cesar Vela for BP of Finance for the Record. Board members, we are currently working with a vendor that has offered to provide vegan menu options. We currently, right now, have three vendors that are providing services, two at the, two at the South Campus, two here. Chick-fil-A is providing services at both campuses. We do, traffic has been slow. So this particular vendor that we're working with has shown interest in providing services here at the main campus, but they want to start Mondays and Wednesdays, and they will be providing breakfast and lunch options. And again, as part of our discussions, we did bring up the discussion of having a vegan, vegan menu options, which they're willing to accommodate.
I have a question, Ms. Vela.
Yes.
What is the exact money that is going to be allocated for this particular purpose?
No, there's no funding provided. All, all we're providing is the space for the vendors to provide their services.
So just to make sure, have y'all made any attempts to reach out to numerous vendors and all that stuff?
We're in the process. Again, traffic has been slow. So what we're trying to do is hopefully for the spring semester, we do want to send out an invitation for vendors to participate. Like I said, right now, we have already two here at the main campus, which were vendors that we, we were working before, in the past. We may have space for one more vendor to, here at the Kason Center.
I did have a couple of people ask me, interested parties, that, and this is like for the Laredo Vegan Society. Also, I wanted to ask you in terms of how their, how the question is being formulated, because I, I became aware that they're not being very specific, so vendors do not know how many students are they going to service, how many days are they going to be here. So, so I just, I just wanted to see, we had a little bit more details in order for us to provide this information to potential vendors.
And, and that is the reason why we haven't sent out the formal yet, because we're still gauging the traffic. A lot of our students that, a lot of our student population right now is online. We are starting to see face-to-face pickup with the tuition waiver incentive. But yes, we're, we're trying to get all that information so that we can...
I appreciate it if you all can expedite this, because the last time we discussed this was back in August. And I think one of the reasons that, yeah, everybody keeps making reference to online classes, but if we do not make our campus more friendly and more diverse, how are we going to encourage students to actually come in person? And this goes back to numerous things, such as like that Camilo Prada, same thing. So I just want to make sure that we're doing everything in our hands to, to promote diversity and to be more warming and welcoming to all students, faculty, and staff. Because I know there's a lot of faculty members and staff members that are vegetarian and vegans. And, I mean, seventy percent of colleges across the United States offer a breakfast, lunch, and dinner option, and I don't see why it's so hard for us to be able to be part of the two-thirds of colleges across the United States. So I highly encourage that we expedite this as soon as possible, so we can get this resolved and maybe be able to provide vegan and vegetarian options.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Mr. Rangel.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this, Ms. Elizondo. On this end, I know that, and I, and I completely understand what you say, Ms. Vela, that it's very hard to gauge it on, on, on students, especially because we're barely having them come back. Have we looked into probably sending out a survey on, on staff that is here on a daily basis? Because I, I believe that there's probably a lot of staff members that, like Ms. Elizondo said, that they're probably either vegan or, or, or vegetarian. If we would be able to at least, because being that they're here permanent, you know, have we sent out something that we could maybe get some feedback from staff that, that would help us, you know, put something together with maybe actual numbers? Because staff does have to be here. Of course, I do understand that we do have some professors that might just come in on certain days, you know, and maybe we could get those numbers as well on the certain days that they're here. But for sure, the, the staff that is permanent here from Monday to Friday, have we looked into those type of, of, of numbers?
Actually, that's a good, very good recommendation. We have talked about doing surveys for students to gauge the services at the cafeteria, but yeah, we...
I, I, I think staff is, is, is a huge component into, into, you know, putting this together as a solid number for, for, for these, for these institutions to come in here and bid. And you can maybe even have it into tiers on saying, maybe this is staff solid from Monday to Friday, these are the numbers. This, and this is what they're, what they're looking at, Chick-fil-A, vegetarian, vegan, wherever it might be. Maybe having certain staff members that come in on Monday, this is the staff that, that comes in on Tuesday, this is the staff that comes in. And then, and then, of course, the students, which is, you know, as well a huge component. Then that may, that, that would maybe give us a better, a better solid number for these competitors to maybe even bid or decide to actually come in and do that, if we could do that and get that.
Yes, we'll certainly do that.
One observation that I, that I've observed since I'm at the South Campus, a lot of the students bring their lunch.
Yes.
So they come and eat their lunch. I've spoken to one of the vendors. He's having a hard time.
That's right.
Because he can't gauge how much food to prepare, because kids don't have the money to buy the food, first and foremost. Or they bring their lunch, or they go home. A lot of kids are real close to the South Campus, so they go home and eat.
That's right.
So it's, it's very hard to gauge, and that's my observation, since I am at the South Campus.
Yes. And, and that has been an issue that we've been having, Ms. Vela, at the South Campus.
Yes.
We've tried, we've tried multiple vendors.
Yes.
So it is, it is, it is a difficult situation. And that's why we're, right now, as we're reopening, we don't want to have too many vendors because...
Right.
They'll, they'll start leaving because the sales are not there.
The sales are not there, and they can't afford to...
Yes.
Waste all that food. I mean, one of the vendors was telling me this. And this is just an observation that I've done, because I'm there every day. So Chair recognizes Ms. Vela.
You know, if, if I remember correctly, of course, this is years ago, when it comes to staff, most of the staff would just come for coffee and leave. And, I mean, they, they work here, and at lunchtime, they go eat elsewhere, they go home, whatever it is, just like you do. You know, you don't want to stay where, and, and it is, it's a hard thing to judge. You don't know how many students. And now with all these onlines, and, you know, it's, it's very, very hard to judge and, and to even think about how many students would use it, not like it was in the past. In the past, you know, people didn't have cars, and we had to. But that's not the case anymore. So...
Right. Chair recognizes Dr. Carranza.
Yes, it's, it's very difficult for you, Ms. Vela, because this college, basically, over half of the students work. That is a catch. They don't stay in campus. You can come here around one o'clock, eleven o'clock. It's almost a ghost town over here. You don't see students anymore. I've, I've been here when they were about the highest level of students enrolled, but they didn't stay. Most of them worked. Most of them left. Or they, they, you know, that's how we do, that's how it works. I don't, so I don't know how you're going to get a number.
It's hard.
You can get a number, but it's not going to guarantee that that number is going to be around when, every day.
That's right.
Chair recognizes Ms. Ramos and Ms. Elizondo.
One observation, and we went through this before, in, I believe it was 2015, we had a lot of difficulty trying to get people to come and bid.
That's right.
So that they could participate at the Kason, because we wanted those companies that would be, that would be recognizable, like Chick-fil-A, Taco Palenque, and so forth, and other of the companies. And one of the things that we continuously, because I was part of that committee at the time, was they did, they could engage the number of students, how many students were coming, how many students were, were buying, right?
Right.
And so shortly after that, they, we decided to change to if you wanted to come and were, and, and participate by being a, a vendor at the, at the Kason or at the South Campus, then you would come, but you wouldn't give back. Before, through the bid process, we would ask them to give a percentage of what they were making. So if they were making a hundred dollars, they had to give us ten dollars, right? And so we found that it wasn't working because they weren't coming to be able to, number one, to bid, number two, to stay with us and to be there, you know? It's up to the business itself to gauge what is the traffic that happens, and you, and you can provide some directions, some information. You can provide them, we have this number of students that come to school here, right? And so it's up to them to actually do like a, like a program evaluation to see if it's going to work for them, and how much food they need to make based on what they are bringing to the table. But most of our students will bring their own food. Most of our stu, most of our employees will also bring their own food, and, or they'll go for lunch once a week out.
That's right.
I mean, I do it at school, too. I, I bring my lunch, and I don't even eat lunch from there. So it, it makes sense for me not to be spending the money by going out, right? So to speak. But this has been going on for many years.
Yes.
The situation.
Chair recognizes Ms. Elizondo.
I mean, we're going to have a food vendor regardless. All I'm asking is to please consider the option for vegetarian dish or vegan options. That's it. Thank you.
And the vendor that is the South, one of the vendors at the South Campus does offer a vegan.
Taco Palenque?
No.
Taco de Pico?
Eduardo's.
Eduardo's. So he will prepare something for you if you do not eat any of the meats. He is willing to. He has a really nice salad, because I've seen it. So, so he does provide something else for the students as well. Any other discussion?
No.
No, ma'am.
Okay. So, thank you, Ms. Elizondo and Ms. Vela. Next item is Laredo College Presidential Search Committee. Ms. Lupita Cepeda. We have started the process. We have appointed Dr. Veronica Martinez as the liaison between us, the committee, and ACCT. And she's right there. She can stand up. She all can meet her, if you don't know her.
Yes.
Sure, half of you already know her. But she's our liaison.
Okay.
We have started the process. We've invited committee members. I have assigned board members as well to the committee. We will be having our first, on November the 8th, our public forum. It'll be one at nine o'clock at the South Campus, one at twelve noon at the Downtown Campus, and one at 4:00 PM at the Downtown Campus. So if y'all can make it, please make plans to attend. On November the 9th, we've invited everybody that's going to be in the committee to go ahead for training part of the morning, and then we have a special meeting that afternoon to discuss it further.
We will be notified by administration, each one of the members?
As far as...
Who's on the committee?
Oh, to go ahead and remind you of the...
No, 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 to who's on the committee.
Who's on the committee? Okay. So on the committee is Ms. Maris, Mr. Delgado, Ms. Ramos, and myself. On the committee to pick a president, the upcoming president. But as far as the forums, it will be on November the 8th. Make sure, Dr. Tijerina, that the board members get a reminder to attend either the nine o'clock or the twelve noon or the four o'clock, the public forums. They will be advertised in the newspaper and, and any, everywhere else that we advertise.
On the website.
On the website as well, so we can get a good public forum and let us know what they want in a college president. Chair recognizes Mr. Rangel.
Can we get a list of the, the... Um, can we get a list of the, the committee members?
Of all of them.
Of all of them?
Yes.
Yeah.
If we could do that. Now, um, did we have an opportunity to appoint somebody?
Uh, Ms. Elizondo reached out to me and appointed somebody. I didn't hear any committee votes.
No, I, I didn't know that we, we could do that. So I could text you the name?
We already have twenty on the committee.
That's a lot.
But again, this is just the initial.
Way too big.
And then we're gonna go to another, through another process. So if you do want to nominate somebody, you need to let me know, because the second process, we might have different committee members.
Yeah.
Okay, well, can we get?
This has not, I mean, this is just one committee, but then there'll be another committee that will go further, so.
Eh, if we could just get a list, that way, then maybe the person that I would want to nominate is already there.
Okay.
Yeah, if we could get that, and then if we could possibly get the dates that you were saying, the November eighth and all that, so we could.
And that's what I've instructed Dr. Tejirina to send out.
Uh, if we would've wanted to just go and, 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 and hear them out, that would be great.
So, Dr. Tejirina, for the record, um, just to clarify, on November eighth, we will be hosting these forums that are open to everybody. There's also going to be a survey link that will be sent out. On November ninth, we will have a special board meeting where the board will approve the presidential profile. So, uh, and then from there, a week tentatively is when ACCT will send out the search nationally. Then from there, they open it up for a couple of months, to my understanding, and then they collect the applications. ACCT will filter out whoever's not qualified, and then the applications are brought to this committee. This committee will review whatever amount comes in, and then from there, we'll select the top three, top five, you know, just like the last time, but what Ms. Sepeda was referring, when the, the finalists come in, that's where ACCT will explain. Last time, we had different sub-forums. So like, uh, education uh, committee would come in and meet the finalists and then score them. We had a business industry committee, so it's really up to how the board wants to set up. But ultimately, just for point of clarification, the board will make the final approval of your, the sole finalist and the, the, the president.
Okay.
Chair recognizes Dr. Carranza and then Ms. Elizondo. Oh, I thought you had raised your hand. Ms. Elizondo.
Just for clarification purposes, if I understand correctly, so this committee is going to be a living organism in the sense that we're going to be actively able to appoint people? Or, cause.
The committee has already, the, the first committee is already there.
Okay.
And I took your recommendation of the person you recommended. I talked to him and he accepted, okay? There's gonna be another committee after the candidates are picked, then we have all the applications and everything. Then there'll be another committee that will come in. Maybe part of that committee will stay and I'll, we will appoint other committee members, depending on if I get any more recommendations from the board, and then we'll continue the process.
Is there any requirement as to how many board members can be a part of the search committee?
Four. Four.
Yeah, you don't want.
Four board members.
Cause you don't wanna have the five.
You don't wanna have.
If you have the five, you have four.
A court.
A walking quorum, so I can only have four. Three to four.
I think last time we were three.
Three.
We were only three last time.
Okay, but I would like to just request that we keep, we get all the information that you guys are exposed to whenever, cause I mean, it's the board pres-, the, literally the board officers are going to be engaging on this. I would like to please request that we are constantly informed of applications that are submitted and all that stuff.
There's gonna be hundreds of applications.
Well, I mean, just to keep us updated.
Sure.
Yeah.
Chair recognizes Ms. Ramos.
So in the last committee that we, that we participated in, Judge Martinez was the chair. Ms. Vela and myself were a part of the committee, and so what we did is we provided as much information as possible. So right now, the first step is the presidential profile. What are we looking for? And, and that with that meeting on November the ninth, that we're going to be, the committee is gonna be training, uh, then we're gonna meet with the, with the board and we're gonna tell them, this is what the forums brought out. Do you agree or disagree? And so then, once the applications go out, we have no knowledge who applies. They do not provide us with a list of who applies. They do all the vetting, so to speak, making sure that they're qualified based on the presidential profile, because there are actually the qualifications that we're looking for, right? And so then, once that happens, this is gonna be several months in the making. After that, we might not hear about the committee, or we might not meet with the committee for a couple of months, until probably March or April. So if one, if some of our board members might wonder, well, what's happening? Why are you meeting? We, we, we don't meet. We just wait until they, they go ahead and review the applications. They're the ones that vet them, they're the ones that review them. They look at their backgrounds and see if they're the ones that are qualified to be part of the pool. Once the pool comes in here and we look at all of the applications as a committee, then we rank and score them.
Yeah.
Right? And then all those committee members, uh, uh, all the committee members submit their ranks for each of the individuals, and we come up with an, uh, one through fourteen, one through fifteen. Uh, there, there are some other colleges in, right now, Victoria College just hired their, 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 their next president. And so we might wanna look into, uh, our fellow board members might wanna look at their website and seeing how they did their executive search, you know? Uh, Brazosport is in the, Brazosport College in Houston is also in the process of naming their, uh, their, their lone finalist. So there's other ones that are coming, and maybe those individuals that applied for those positions will like our presidential profile and apply for, for our, for our position.
Now, Ms. Muir, for these uh, the forums that we're gonna have on Monday, November the eighth, can all board members attend and, and do their input?
And listen, yeah.
Or, or listen to what's gonna be said by the public and whoever attends the forums?
So if all board members were going to attend, I would post an agenda and I could work with uh, the college president and board president on the wording for that agenda, but we wanna give the public notice under the Open Meetings Act that the board will be uh, convening for a public forum where members of the public will, exactly.
Even though we're advertising in, in newspaper and everywhere that we're having this.
Well, we have, I'm not sure if the newspaper advertisement would satisfy the Texas Open Meetings Act, but we would have to be sure that the notice would comply with the terms of the Open Meetings Act, and I haven't been asked to look at that, so I'd be happy to look at it and see, and I think, and just one point that I believe that ACCT is going to give the board a very detailed explanation of the step-by-step process, what, here's what happened in step one and two and three. So everybody feels very comfortable with the process.
And, and you are correct.
Yeah.
ACCT will be giving us progress reports and everything.
And, and, and maybe on the, the ninth, when they're, is it the ninth?
The ninth.
Dr. Tejirina had mentioned to me that, that that's when they can give the overview.
That, that's correct. On November ninth, they will summarize to the board what the, what the forum summaries were all about and what were the common roots of, uh, or the common themes for the presidential profile. The board will then approve uh, those profiles before they launch the national search. Um, and then they will also explain the timelines, recommendations for the board, but none of this process is going to be done without you all's approval and that guidance.
Chair recognizes Ms. Elizondo.
No, oh.
She had her, her hand raised earlier.
I'm sorry.
No, I.
If, if I. Chair recognizes Ms. Vela.
If I remember correctly, a lot is confidential. You, we don't know, you can't tell everybody who applied and who's applying, no. A lot, in fact, the majority of that is confidential, so it's, it's a very. Well, not everybody does.
Chair recognizes Ms. Ramos.
And once again, I think the reason why, and I know, I don't think, I know, the reason why they don't divulge that list of applicants to us before we review is because if I am a president or a vice president at a particular college, I could be in so much trouble if I go and apply and I don't get the job. There have been instances across the country where someone will say something about who is applying. When they go back to their job, they also are in jeopardy of losing their job. So this is an administrative professional position, and across the country, people want to make sure that their confidentiality is preserved because this is a very lucrative position for individuals who apply. And so with that, I, I would suggest that if we all wanna participate, which I think we all do wanna participate in the forums, how about if we select, I can go at nine, or I can go at twelve, or I can go at four. And, and we don't have to post something because it's not gonna be a meeting, but we all have different schedules. And, you know, there's certain times that I can make it at a certain time.
I like that idea.
I like that idea too.
Chair recognizes Mr. Muir.
Thank you, Madam President. Just to expound on what Ms. Ramos said, uh, there could be somebody there at the forum that's sort of policing, if you will, okay, we've got four board members here, let's wait until somebody leaves the room, so you don't get into a violation of the Open Meetings Act. And I also wanted to mention, just echo something Ms. Vela said, and she's absolutely right, this is a very confidential process. Most, if not all, of the discussions can take place in executive session uh, under the personnel exception uh, uh, matter of the Open Meetings Act, and you can have discussions with ACCT members in there. So it's, selecting the college president is something that, that can be done. Well, not the decision, but the information leading up to it can be done in executive session.
Chair recognizes Mr. Rangel.
Thank you, President, Madam President. I like what Ms. Ramos said. I think that's very, uh, maybe, uh, you know, like you mentioned rusty policing, I do understand that, maybe if Ms. Bocanera could just send out first come, first served. You choose the slot that you might want, the A M., the P M., the evening, and allow, hey, let's say on the eighth, I, I can't, in the morning, I could go in the afternoon at four o'clock. I'll be at that one, but it's a first come, first served. She could literally just say, if I say I, I choose the one at four o'clock, it's already booked. There's already four uh, members going, you need to choose another one.
Yeah.
And I think that would allow a better policing on, on that end, if she could just send out an email just saying which slot you would like to, you know, go, so then that way we could just be informed and, you know, uh, and ask any questions that we could possibly ask to, to put our input. I like that idea.
Put it on a calendar too. Put it on a calendar. Dr. Tejirina, you can follow up on that. Chair recognizes Dr. Carranza.
Good, we can go to. Number one, we know it's confidential. I mean, we're grownups already, and we're in positions, especially like a board. We know, we don't need to be reminded that this is not gonna be confidential. And another thing, the individual that is applying for these positions, if they're vice president or president or whatever position they, they have to tell their president that they're gonna be applying for this position.
No, they say don't.
No, sure, not everybody does.
Not everybody does.
Because if they don't, because if they don't, then they find out, they're gone.
Any other discussion?
No ma'am, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, let's go.
Mr. Muir, do I have to read all twelve A through F?
No.
Before we go?
It is a lot. Uh, I would, and I can do it, I'm happy to if you'd like.
I mean, I can read it, but.
I suggest that they be read.
That's fine. Round robin? Can we do round robin? Go ahead, go ahead. I'll give it to you, Mr. Muir.
Thank you, Mr. Muir.
Okay, items twelve A through F are executive session items. Twelve A, consultation with Laredo College Attorney to discuss former employee equal employment opportunity commission, EEOC complaint and dismissal notice pursuant to Texas Government Code Section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one. Item twelve B, consultation with Laredo College Attorney to discuss the status of the following lawsuit, United States of America versus two-hundred-and-two-point-eight-hundred-ninety-three acres of land, more or less, situated in Webb County, state of Texas, and Laredo College, case number five-colon-twenty-dash-CV-dash-zero-six-seven, pending in the United States District Court for the Southern District of Texas, Laredo Division pursuant to Texas Government Code Section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one. Consultation with Laredo College Attorney to discuss legal issues concerning communications under the Texas Open Meetings Act between board members and/or administration outside of a duly noticed meeting pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one. Mr. Esteban Rangel. Discussion concerning the feasibility and sustainability of the Laredo College Camilo Prada Child Development Center, including a possible change to the current status of the center pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one and five-five-one-point-zero-seven-four. Dr. Maricela Rodriguez Tejerina. This twelve E, discussions concerning legal issues related to the feasibility and sustainability of the Laredo College Athletics Program, the possible disbanding of the athletics program and the personnel employed in the athletics program pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one and five-five-one-point-zero-seven-four. Dr. Maricela Rodriguez Tejerina. And the last item, twelve F, discussion concerning the Laredo College Athletics Program as it relates to action taken by the Laredo College Board of Trustees during meetings held on April twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-one, and May ten, twenty-twenty-one, and reinstating all or part of the Laredo College Athletics Program pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one and five-five-one-point-zero-seven-four. Ms. Karina, Karia Elizondo, and that's items twelve A through twelve F, Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Muir.
Second.
So I have a, a motion by Mr. Rangel, I have a second by Ms. Ramos. So executive session at this time. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Who would be joining us on executive session?
So executive session at this time, I'm going to recommend we go to executive session. The time is eight forty-six. And the board will adjourn into executive session pursuant to Sections five-five-one-dot-zero-seven-one and five-five-one-dot-zero-seven-four, the Texas Government Code, to discuss agenda items uh, twelve A through twelve F. Dr. Tejerina, who will be joining us?
Um, I, I'm recommending myself and Mr. Esteban Vela for the items.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
And I would like to recommend, uh, Dr. Arasola. I mean, he oversees athletics, doesn't he? Thank you.
So it is eleven thirteen. We reconvene from closed session. And the board took no action, and executive session will take appropriate action on items if necessary, as discussed in closed session. So the first item under.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to bring item thirteen F, action concerning the Laredo College Athletics Program as it relates to action taken by the Laredo College Board of Trustees during meetings held on April twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-first, May ten, twenty-twenty-one, and reinstating all or part of the Laredo College Athletics Program.
So Ms. Elizondo has made a, a motion, I have a second, from Mr. Rangel. A discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And we already discussed this in the session, I'm sorry, I'm.
Okay, I'm gonna take a vote.
Oh.
So, cause you, we brought it up, so now we just vote on it.
To, to move it, right?
To move it, but, but I had to say first, any discussion? So no discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who said aye? Raise your hands, please.
To move it, to move it.
To move it up.
To move it up?
Yes.
Move it up.
Okay, so, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
To move it up, motion carries.
I, I would like to apologize for everyone here who already discussed this inside, but, and I wanna apologize for with all of you all for taking you off today. Uh, but I wanna approach the board tonight because today, and not only do I stand as a Laredo College Board of Trustee, but I stand as a former high school and college athlete. I also stand here as a friend and advocate of all sports. And as Coach Don Juan mentioned earlier, today, this, this year marks the fiftieth anniversary of the athletics program. Fifty years ago, nine brave members, with the support of administration, established the, the athletics programs by introducing tennis in nineteen seventy-one. This was so successful that volleyball was later introduced in nineteen seventy-eight. Subsequently, seven years later, baseball was introduced. I can say that I'm as old as a baseball, as a baseball. I can say that I'm as old as a baseball, as a baseball program. In twenty-fourteen, Judge Mercurio Martinez, Ms. Cynthia Mahrez, and Dr. Carranza joined forces with the rest of their colleagues and brought soccer and softball to the Palomino family. In an anonymous vote, it was nine to zero. Thanks to all these wonderful individuals, thousands of students have benefited for this, through this program. I can honestly say, through all that numerous calls and messages and conversations that I have had with the public, that they're very thankful for these opportunities. And especially because sport, sports are a lot more than just practices and games. Sports transform lives. They help, they help students stay in school, they help our retention rates, and they help them stay away from trouble. They teach, they teach them values, practice, patience, perseverance, commitment, and teamwork, valuable traits to succeed in life. Unfortunately, as you all know, and COVID happened. Organization on Leaders across the world had to suspend daily interactions to stop the spread of this virus. Colleges and school districts across the state started to slowly reintegrate. They started opening their doors. Fast forward to today, Laredo College seems to be taking a slow approach. The athletics program, as well as the Camilo Prada Child Daycare Center, have not been reinstated. Even though we have received millions and millions of dollars, federal and state grants and awards, we have not been able to bring those programs back. Federal, okay. As Mr. Vela has presented in the past, and as Andrea Lopez presented to us tonight, tuition and fees are quickly picking up. The bond interest and the refinance funds that we receive of almost four-point-seven millions in April eight, twenty-twenty-one, went straight to our general fund. Federal, federal and state grants and awards will cover specific expenditures, allowing us the opportunity to free up other funds that we have budgeted already. We need to continue to focus on students in our community. I know at this point, I wanted to introduce a video of our, of this board when they took the action of.
Yes, please. Call for the question, Madam Chair. Call for the question.
How can I? Can I, with the, with the sound?
And that would represent the, and if they choose not to, we. Yeah, exactly. So it would be more of an invitation to more organizations within the Laredo College community. Uh, but, you know, working together with Dr. Solis, of course, I believe he mentioned that there were going to be several individuals that were going to be recommended, but we could certainly send out that invitation to the other organizations like ASO, the students. I believe we have one student representative, so.
Right. Any other discussion?
Yes, please.
Call for the question, Madam Chair. Call for the question. I'm going, I have Dr. Solis.
Yes, very quick.
I recognize Dr. Solis.
Thank you. Yes, I just wanted to, again, for clarification purposes, when we first came up, let's remember, the compelling justification for us to postpone sport for a year was not for athletic purposes or performance, but it was for safety reasons. And so by bringing in two people from the ISDs, from the athletic department, that kind of really does not justify why we need them. It really should be, if we're going to go from our original compelling reason, it was safety and health. Therefore, I'm not saying, I'm sorry, I don't mean to convolute or confuse the whole nomination process, but I just want to make that point. I'm not saying that, but it was from the health reasons, a health person should be on the committee, not necessarily somebody from the ISD. That's just an observation. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Dr. Solis. Any other?
I just wanted to make reference to the fact that as per our previous presidency, money was not a concern. And that was literally March twenty-twenty-first. Administration now claims that there's no funds, even though that was not too long ago. All of the presentation, all of the enrollment numbers, as we can see, and as Dr. Fred Solis attested in the past, enrollment has increased seven, by seven percent, if I'm not mistaken, pre-COVID to post-COVID. Tonight, Andrea Lopez also presented a forty-four percent increase. So whenever they tell me that there's not enough traditional students, even though as we speak, we have approximately five thousand traditional students enrolled and almost four thousand dual enrollment, this statistics mimic previous years during pandemic, pre-pandemic. So I just want for this board to please consider, to please consider the fact that when there's a will, there's a way. And I can, we can spend hours talking tonight about whether there's money or not. The truth of the matter is, is that we have an extremely healthy general fund. And I would like to ask Mr. Judge Mercurio Martinez to please help me elaborate a little bit more as to the policies and gallons of the general fund. Requirements.
Thank you very much, Judge Martinez. Happy to. I just want to, what we already discussed in executive session, where we are one of the very few community colleges, or one of the few colleges, including universities, in the entire state that is exceptionally solvent. At the present time, we do have a fund balance of close to, around thirty-five percent fund balance. Uh, and so we can actually have access to that fund balance up to a point that we do not go beyond the twenty-five percent. Uh, so during this interim period, that's a possibility in which we might have access to that. We will also, may I remind our members of the board that when we ended up refinancing the bonds that we originally floated, we, the, in the refinancing of those bonds, out of a much lower interest, of the bonds that were outstanding, we ended up saving in interest, a little over four million dollars in interest alone. So that in itself also is a big plus for our community college. So from that point of view, Ms. Elizondo, I think right now, we're in a position to fund some of these programs.
Thank you, Judge Mercurio Martinez. And also, I wanted to make reference to the fact that on August twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one, Mr. Cesar Vela, Chief Financial Executive Officer, reported to the college that we had had collected over ninety-eight percent tax collection rate. This is an amazing job. As you all know, this college depends a hundred percent, well, not a hundred percent, but on the tax collection rate, it's our highest revenue. So I feel very confident that this board can afford bringing athletics back. Also, as per Chief Executive Officer, Mr. Vela, Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Vela, he reported that the higher education emergency relief funds will be used to cover revenue losses. They already started to pay for these losses. He proposed the purchase of equipment for twenty-twenty-two using FY twenty-twenty-one savings, AKA our general fund. This indicates that we have an extremely healthy budget. And I want to echo the words of Judge Mercurio Martinez, that we are in a position to proceed with this. He has been in this board for many, many, many years. He know, he has accounting experience and everything, so. And I would like just to confirm with Mr. Vela, can I please have the total amount of our general fund as of July twenty-twenty-one? Or August? Yes.
Chair recognizes Mr. Vela.
Or, I mean, okay, is it above what our policy requires to sustain?
Yes, I do need to clarify again. When we look at our general operating fund balance for the year, this year, again, we haven't closed out the year.
Twenty-twenty-one?
Twenty-twenty-one, okay? Uh, right now, we haven't closed out the complete fiscal year. We have, we're adding seven-point-three million right now to the fund balance. If you look at our fund balance on your, on your financial report, you will see that it shows negative balance. And let me show you right here. Our fund balance is negative.
I'm looking at your proposed twenty-twenty-two.
No, that is, that is the budget.
Yeah, exactly.
It is negative five-point-six million dollars. And the reason for it being negative, it's because we got two GASPys that we need to follow, which are liabilities that we have on our books for the retirement plan and health insurance benefits for our retirees.
If we go to a different month, is there going to be other things that we need to address, or?
No. So what I'm trying to.
Because on your meeting of July of twenty-twenty-one, you weren't able to confirm the actual amount because we still had two payments to be done. So.
I don't think you're, I don't think you're understanding the presentations.
Okay, in July twenty-twenty-first, you noted that it was not a complete amount because we were still pending.
That is correct. Right now, right now.
And August, it's a different thing.
Well, August, we, in July was a different month, right? So we haven't completed the year. Right now, we're closing the year. And when I mentioned the negative balance on the fund balance, again, it's due to the GASPY sixty-eight and GASPY seventy-five. I've always mentioned to the board, the fund balance netting out the GASPY sixty-eight, sixty-five, seventy-five is forty-four-point-six million dollars, again. But we do have to account for those liabilities.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you. Okay, so, uh, he also noted in our proposed budget that with our savings from the general fund, we're going to purchase new equipment. So we do have money. It's just a matter as to how this board wants to proceed. And also, I want to make reference to the millions of dollars that have been saved in salary personnel savings, even from the athletics department itself. We, out of approximately sixteen positions, six are filled. So all of those savings, not only from the athletics department, but for every single department across the college, are going directly to the general fund. So not only from salary savings, but every, every single department that doesn't deplete their funds by the end of the fiscal year, those monies are taken away and transferred to the general fund. Judge Mercurio Martinez just attested to the fact of the interest that we made on bonds, and also the status report from Dr. Solis in April of twenty-twenty-one. We had, four-point-seven million dollars were transferred to the general fund. So I want to ask this board to please reconsider the reinstatement of the athletics program in order to avoid any legal potential issues as to what, and avoid any inequality claims. I propose that we bring all of the, that we reinstate all of the, um, the athletics program, and also I want to make reference to the fact that every student that, not counting dual enrollment, that it's solely just the traditional students, they pay money to allocate for athletics. So when they tell me that there's no money, there is money, that they are paying every single time they register for one hour. So I would like to make a motion to reinstate all of the athletics program.
So Ms. Elizondo has made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rangel. Any discussion? None heard? All in favor?
Aye.
Can you raise your hands, please? So Ms. Mahrez, Mr. Rangel, Mr. Martinez. That's it? Oh, and Ms. Elizondo. Okay, so we have against. So we have Ms. Vela, Ms. Ramos, and Ms. Sepeda against. Motion does not pass.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Elizondo.
Thank you, Ms. Elizondo.
So I'm going to go back to item number thirteen A. Former, I'm sorry. Former employee Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, EEOC complaint and dismissal notice. Our legal, Chair recognizes Mr. Muir.
No action is required, board members on this one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is thirteen B, action relating to United States of America versus two-oh-two-dot-eight-nine-three acres of land, more or less situated in a Webb County, state of Texas.
Make a motion, we deny.
Second.
So I have a motion by Judge Martinez, I have a second by Mr. Rangel. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
None heard? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thirteen C, approval of options to implement for communications between board members and/or administration.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Chair recognizes Mr. Rangel.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to have staff meet with counsel and our board president to come up with a recommendation by next board meeting.
Okay, is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Judge Martinez. Any discussion? None heard? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thirteen D, feasibility and sustainability of the Laredo College Camilo Prada Child Development Center, including a possible change to the current status of the center. Dr. Maricela Rodriguez Tejerina.
Yes, Dr. Tejerina, for the record, so the proposal is to reopen and start transferring our staff, Camilo Prada staff, February first, so that they can begin opening the center at fifty percent in March of twenty-twenty-two. And I want to remind the board that the reason, it's based on accreditation and it's tied to educational programs, which is very important to.
Motion to approve.
Second.
So I have a motion by Mr. Rangel, I have a second by Ms. Ramos. Any discussion? None heard? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thirteen E, do I need to spring back?
Thirteen E and thirteen F has already been addressed.
Because E and F, okay. So thirteen E was addressed by thirteen F.
No.
No.
It's different.
Oh, it's different.
They're different items. So we called thirteen F, Madam Chair, and there was a motion on that. That's no longer on the table, and thirteen is the next item.
Okay. The feasibility and sustainability of the Laredo College Athletics Program, including the possible disbanding of the athletics program and the employment status of the athletic program employees. Dr. Maricela Rodriguez Tejerina.
Dr. Tejerina, for the record, just a summary of what the proposal stated, and it's to remind the board that Laredo College is focused on student success. And over the years, this is a very complicated issue because over the years, we have experienced a decrease in tuition and fees. And although our overall enrollment has increased, our traditional enrollment has not, which is what, what collects the student activity fee. There's a lot of financial impact, and by adding athletics back, we have to remind that the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, there was no athletic budgets that were placed in this year's budget other than staff. So to reinstate it, or to sustain it, we would have to remove close to one-point-five million dollars out of the general operating, or increase student activity fees, which by student surveys, highly indicated that they do not want a student activity fee increase. So our recommendation was to disband because the feasibility and sustainability of this program is not, not available due to the increased academic programs that we want to bring back and the reevaluation of other programs.
Okay. Do I have a motion? So I have a motion by Ms. Vela. Do I have a second?
What is the motion?
To disband.
To disband.
To eliminate.
The athletics program.
Okay. To disband, so you made the motion?
So Ms. Vela made the motion. Do I have a second? So I have a second by Ms. Ramos. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
So I have four posts. So I have four opposed.
Motion dies.
The motion dies. Thank you, everybody.
I just want to, for the record...
Chair recognizes Ms. Elizondo.
I just want to say that I'm extremely disappointed by this administration. I cannot accept the fact that they can stand before us and introduce new programs. New programs. And last, previous administration, they had their own programs. This administration has their own program. So there are enough funds to fund Dr. Maricela's proposed programs, but there's not enough funds to fund athletics. That's unacceptable. And I just wanted, for the record, note that just how they intend to fund future programs, I want you all to use the same metrics and the same statistics and the same reports that Mr. Vela has been provided to justify the implementation of future programs.
Thank you, Ms. Elizondo. Chair recognizes Dr. Tejera.
And for the record, those are not my programs. Those are the programs of the Laredo College community and the employees.
Thank you, Dr. Tejera.
Thank you, Maricela. Thank you, Dr. Maricela.
Okay, the next is the president's report. Do you have anything to report?
Yet.
So next meeting day is Tuesday, November 9th, at 6:00 PM, a special board meeting. Next is to be determined December 16th or 21, 2021, at 6:00 PM, regular board trustees meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, so I have a motion by Mr. Rangel, a second by Judge Martinez. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.